Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Katie, would you do the determination of quorum, please?
Yes, James Barnes.
Here.
Sarah Chavilecek.
Present.
Larry Chesney.
Present.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Philip Perrin.
Yes, I am.
And Greg Pro is absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. Then I'd ask Phil if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Please follow me, I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, ethics law announcement, Mr. Edwards.
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, you have received a gift or loan, you have a pecuniary interest or commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship, you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, or commitment at the time the matter is being considered, and you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, or commitment would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the planning commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Okay, Mr. Lloyd, would you read the appeal procedure, please?
Will do, thanks. Most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application fee.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Katie, is there any general public comment?
There is. We have Tammy Still followed by Janice Hunt.
Okay. Would you please come forward and state your name and address?
I have distributed some handouts. Each of you will have one up front that Tammy Still brought in at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, we do have your statement. Thank you.
Hello, Washoe Planning Commission. My name is Tammy Holt Still. I am coming before you today representing myself and residents of Lemon Valley flood victims. You have received your handout. For the record, we are requesting that the city of Reno in Washoe County to halt or establish a building moratorium immediately in all the north valleys as the water runoff from those buildings are exacerbating the flooding situation in Lemon Valley. The runoff from all of the buildings in front of Lemon Valley, Golden Valley instead has five times the amount of water in Swan Lake without the infrastructure for Swan Lake to accept that water. In the early 1990 reports warned of increased flooding damage if mitigation measures were not adopted. Washoe County Engineering and Capitol Projects District Director Dwayne Smith stressed anything that goes into the basin that would stop water from going into the ground, a building, a roadway, any type of physical structures, would reduce the imprevious surface and the issue that it doesn't allow the water to get into the ground in the same way that it does historically. The county's 1991 Flood Control Master Plan identifies closed lake basins as one of the several sources that warranted additional consideration in the selection of flood control options. Hydraulic analysts of Lemon Valley prepared in 1996 for the city of Reno in Washoe County warned that in regards to the future development, since Lemon Valley is a closed basin with no outlet or flood runoff other than evaporation increased in previous area anywhere in the valley can cause the amount of water entering the playa and thus the level of the playa to increase. A report by Manert Consulting conducted for the county in 2010 outlined flood mitigation options, but when it came to Lemon Valley, the cost of the scale project was determined to exceed the potential benefits. Really? Look at us now in 2017, absolutely criminal. In turn, this goes right back to the violation of Code 110-416.57 by Washoe County which has occurred for the loss of homes and Lemon Valley residents' way of life and a lot of money. Let's flood your homes and see how you feel. If I can find a way to prove criminal negligence within Washoe County and its employees for the neglect that it has caused to create this catastrophe, it is my moral responsibility to do so.
Thank you. Katie, who's next?
Next, we have Janice Hunt followed by Bridget Harmon.
This is General.
Okay, would you state your name and address, please?
Janice Hunt, 175 Judy Way. I also live in the flooded Lemon Valley, but my concern tonight, at this point in time, is about the garbage collection. I'm so disappointed, I've emailed different times to the commission to ask why in the world do I have a garbage that is this big, way bigger than I am, and I have a trash bag when I do my e-waste, when I do my waste in the recycle, I have this much garbage. I have one tiny little bag, not even the size of a big trash can. I have one small bag in this big green container. My blue container is three-quarters full. So I'm doing what I'm supposed to do for the environment, and I feel like you guys have failed in doing your due diligence about the size of a container. Maybe if I was a family of thirty, I could fill that trash can full, but as it is, I cannot even fill a trash can that size in six months. Yet you have me paying more. You guys didn't do a very good job at finding out, you know, what other types of containers might be available, if there was any other prices. I used to have my own trash can, I paid five bucks less, I did recycle. Everything seemed to be working out pretty good until somebody got the big idea of changing the sizes of the cans, which is totally a waste for me. I'm not appreciative of the fact that whoever did the checking into this, I'm not a fan of how you rolled it out to us. I received it on one week, the next week we were into it for good. We had a meeting in between there, but I got it three days before, my friends got it in the subdivision seven days afterwards. So there was no recourse to say, you know, this doesn't sound like a really good idea. So I'm not sure who you're representing, but it sure wasn't me, and it wasn't the other people that lived around me either. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie, who's next?
Next, we have Bridget Harmon followed by Chris Rassev.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Bridget Harmon, and I lived at 9320 Arrowhead Way, Reno, Nevada, in Golden Valley. I have been concerned about the environmental impact from Swan Lake Conservatory Study because it changed the environmental outlook when you look at Lemon Valley. I've lived there since the nineties, I've moved around. I took the eighty-six report that is a basic layout of the natural status of that valley and its uniqueness about it, and overlaid your master plans, and I submitted this to Governor, or to the mayor today, and I received an email today from her saying that my request for an environmental impact report was granted, and I am asking the committee to put a moratorium on any special permit till that study has been done. Once you change Swan Lake, you change the whole outlook of that valley and how water comes in. In eighty-six, it describes how water comes off the mountains in a braided pattern where it has time to filtrate and grow and, I mean, and disperse through the sand, and every time you have designed something with a retention pond, it doesn't come close. If you take everything and lay it on top of the eighty-six, it doesn't come close to holding the kind of water that nature does, and the way the valley is designed. And I'm asking you, please, until this environmental report is completed, and we know what you are truly doing and how you are affecting these good people, especially Lemon Valley, don't pass one more permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Rassev followed by Andrea Corbett.
Okay, would you please state your name and address?
My name is Chris Rassev. I've lived in 7565 Hillview Drive in Golden Valley for about twenty years now, and I'm kind of unprepared for this because I just recently heard about the development that they're doing out there. But as far as dumping all the traffic onto estates, it's a narrow road, and when you try to get out with the school, it's tough in the morning with everybody coming and going from the school, and I don't know why they have a pipeline that's going to go tear through everybody's front yards to bring water to development when we're all on wells and we have been forever, and they're talking about a sewage lift plan, I haven't even got a chance to look at that yet, but it just seems like it should be, take into consideration the people that are already living there before you grant a permit to let somebody bring in water and all this through people's front yards. So that's about all I have to say about that, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Andrea Corbett followed by Bill Austin.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Andrea Corbett, and I live at 11585 Hart Pine Street in Lemon Valley. I hate speaking in front of people, but here we go. I don't know if what I care about really matters, and even wonder if it, me being here, will impact any decisions on growth. I feel that perhaps the city and the county will do what they want anyway.
Could you bring the mic a little closer to you?
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
When I purchased thirteen years ago, I loved the idea of being in a rural area and being able to maintain a country lifestyle. I'm hugely concerned about the overgrowth that is happening in the north valleys, Cold Springs, Silver Knowles, Lemon Valley, and Golden Valley. I'm also concerned about the traffic impact of the roads and that ability of thousands of cars, more cars being on the road. It actually took me an hour and a half to get ten miles when we had the last snowstorm. Took me an hour the day before. I really hope that the things that are impacting the north valleys negatively will be taken care of before you guys continue to overbuild out there and just push things through. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bill Austin.
Yes, would you please state your name and address?
Yeah, Bill Austin, 11850 Pepperway. I've been in the Reno area for almost forty-five years. I've seen a lot of drought, very little water this last year. There's two concerns, well, three. I don't trust developers. They come in and leave. The water situation through Fish Springs, a third of that water is owed back to Chalk Bluff. So now you start with two-thirds. We will have more drought. There's another item, the sewer. You have a third-world pond, open pond situation in Lemon Valley with no liners. I think you have a problem with the sted unit, and that's probably Reno's deal, isn't it? I think a developer should pay upfront for all the expenses. And we've got some interesting times ahead of us in the next fifteen, twenty years. I don't know if I'll be around at my age, but you have to, we have no storage for water. You're going to have to start addressing that. The Swan Lake area was, it's coming from the Susan River at around forty-five hundred to five thousand foot. It doesn't have a lot of drought. Now, today it does. Everything has more water than it can use. But development has to really be taken care of and looked at and would have, well, it's just not something you can pass on and figure that it's okay. You're going to have to go out maybe twenty years. Now, I've been in construction since the fifties, and I've done and built design systems for sewers, and if it fails on you, you've got a problem, disease and everything else. So that's all I've got to say, is be careful with developers. You know, I've gone through Louis Holmes and a bunch of other people, and Jesus, they've left us with some problems. A double R, they've got problems. So that's all I've got to say, just be careful.
Okay, thank you.
No further public comment.
Okay.
Did you want to speak on a later item? Or have you just? No, no, this is general.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the general public comment. The next item is possible action to approve agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sarah and a second by Francine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Possible action to approve February seven, 2017 draft minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Francine, a second by Larry. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then the February seven, 2017 draft minutes are approved. Okay, let's go to planning items. This is item eight A. Possible action to approve a resolution of appreciation of service for Greg Pro and to authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the planning commission. I'm going to ask Mr. Lloyd to read the resolution. Before he does, though, I'd just like to say that I feel Greg Pro has been an excellent commissioner. We're going to miss him. I wish him the best in the future and hope all goes well for him. So, Mr. Lloyd, if you'd read the resolution, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, will do. Whereas Greg Pro has since his appointment to the planning commission on August twelfth, 2014, as the county commission district four member, been an active and enthusiastic member of the commission, serving the county and its citizens with dedication and distinction. Whereas Greg brought to the planning commission his own invaluable perspective on land use and development based on his extensive experience as both a realtor and as an active member of the Spanish Springs community. Whereas Greg was always polite, positive, upbeat, and cheerful. Whereas Greg was always ready to ask the important and difficult question, sometimes difficult questions, of either staff or the applicant during public hearings. Whereas Greg was fair, accurate, efficient, knowledgeable, and steadfast. Whereas Greg maintained and manifested a sincere interest in the furtherance of good planning principles to include the adequate provision of public services, particularly schools, water, supply, and roads, and their application to quality neighborhood design as well as the mitigation of project impacts. Whereas Greg was always on his own person and voted his conscience on matters before the planning commission. Whereas Greg treated all his fellow commissioners with the utmost respect. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning commission does hereby commend Greg Pro for his extraordinary concern and devotion to the citizens of Washoe County through his service on the Washoe County Planning Commission, and be it further resolved that the Washoe County Planning Commission will sorely miss the unique contributions of Greg Pro and extends to Greg its best wishes for a happy and prosperous future. Adopted the seventh day of March, 2017 by the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Francine. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think you need to open it for a public comment if there is any. I don't know if there is, but...
Oh, okay. Is there any public comment on this resolution?
No public comment.
Okay. Then we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously. We'll go to item eight B. Possible action to approve a resolution of appreciation of service for Bill Whitney and to authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the planning commission. And again, I'm going to ask Mr. Lloyd to read the resolution, but I also would like to make a brief comment. I've worked with Mr. Whitney since the nineties, always found him to be very good to work with, very knowledgeable. Again, we're going to miss him, I think tremendously, and I just wish him the best in the future. So, Mr. Lloyd, if you could read the resolution, I'd appreciate it.
Be happy to. All right, whereas Bill Whitney joined the Department of Comprehensive Planning on November fourteenth, 1988, as an assistant planner. Whereas Bill was promoted to planner with the Department of Comprehensive Planning, senior planner with the Department of Community Development, and finally, the director of the Planning and Development Division within the Community Services Department. Whereas Bill served as the Washoe County representative to the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council and the Bay State North Calniva Resource Conservation and Development Council, and was further a founding board member of the Nevada Fire Safe Council. Whereas Bill was assigned lead staff planner and driving force for the update and maintenance of the conservation element, the land use and transportation element, and the public services and facilities element, all critical elements of the Washoe County Master Plan. Whereas Bill was the staff planner responsible for the initial creation and continued maintenance of the Forest Area Plan, the South Valleys Area Plan, the Southeast Truckee Meadows Area Plan, the Southwest Truckee Meadows Area Plan, and the Truckee Canyon Area Plan. Whereas Bill was instrumental in adopting significant updates to the GRA regulatory zone, that's the General Rural Agricultural Regulatory Zone in the Warm Springs Planning Area, putting in countless hours and attending CAB neighborhood meetings over the span of a three-year period to gather and refine public input on the updates. Whereas Bill was instrumental in adopting significant updates to the Cold Springs Area Plan, the North Valleys Area Plan, and the Sun Valley Area Plan. Whereas Bill was solely responsible for the concept drafting, public coordination, and input, and adoption of the 1994 Washoe County Regional Open Space Plan, and assisted in the update and adoption of the 2008 award-winning plan, which was then incorporated within the Washoe County Master Plan. Whereas Bill managed Washoe County coordination and cooperation with federal land management agencies for most of his twenty-nine years of service with Washoe County, and further was a presenter at the 2004 National American Planning Association Conference in Washington, DC on US Forest Service and local government collaboration. Whereas Bill has always translated the planning principles of community and citizen involvement in master planning and development into tangible outcomes through his actions as a planner and as a division director. Whereas Bill always shared his passion, dedication, and stewardship to his work and citizens of Washoe County. He approached issues with respect and open dialogue to engage all opinions. He remained principled and professional even in the most difficult circumstances. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Washoe County Planning Commission does hereby commend Bill Whitney for his extraordinary concern and devotion to the citizens of Washoe County through his service to Washoe County in the planning profession, and be it further resolved that the Washoe County Planning Commission will sorely miss the unique contributions of Bill Whitney to sound and citizen-based planning in Washoe County, and further extends to Bill its best wishes for a happy and prosperous future. Adopted the seventh day of March, 2017 by the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Mr. Whitney, would you like to say a few words? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and good evening. And thank you for the resolution. I deeply appreciate that. I've been staffing the Board of Adjustment for most of the time that you've all been on this commission, except for Phil, he's a crossover. But I knew without hesitation that this planning commission would be in good hands with Bob Webb and Nate Edwards and our administrative staff to help you with your meetings, so I knew that was going to go well. I also just wanted to say the Planning and Development Division has a committed and talented staff that's there to assist you with whatever you, as a commissioner, need to make some of the difficult decisions that you make on a monthly basis. Trevor Lloyd, Roger Pelham, and Eric Young, who are presenting cases tonight, are good examples. And I urge you to use the staffs, these talented staff, to help you answer your questions when you have them. And most of all, please don't ever underestimate your importance, the importance of your job as a planning commissioner. You're the citizen planners who are making the decisions concerning this wonderful place that we call home. And from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank each and every one of you for your public service. Thank you so much, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Would any Commissioners like to make any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, let's start with Mr. Chesney. We'll do Mr. Chesney first.
Bill, I sincerely am going to miss you. You shepherded us through the general plan for Warm Springs Valley, and that was an audacious task. Took us three or four years to get it done, and without your dedication and your hard work, I don't think it would have ever got rewritten. So I want to thank you for that, and you will truly be missed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chesney. Commissioner Haran, would you like...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was a very long resolution. It was well-deserved, all number of pages of it. Bill, you've been very helpful to me in my Board of Adjustment days, in your guidance and knowledge, and I appreciate that very much. I wish you the best of luck.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Yes, Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, I, you know, I don't know if who of us have known you longer, but we've been here for a very long time, and I just really appreciate all that you have done for Washoe County, and particularly what you have done to preserve open space, because that's near and dear to my heart. So thank you very, so very, very much.
Francine?
Bill, I haven't known you much for the planning commission because I'm fairly new on it, but I have worked with you through several different issues within the community, through the CAB and various other things that I've been on, and I want to say thank you for all that you've done. You've always been there for the residents or anybody that had a question to help work an issue. So I wish you well on your skiing and whatever else you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cobb, would you like to make a statement?
Bill, you're too tall. I had the honor of working with Bill for sixteen years. Did you know that? Eight of them on the Board of Adjustment and eight of them on the planning commission. And like the last Commissioner just said, there's the guy that you can take any problems to, and appreciate your effort by taking them to him. That's a little bit around the horn, but he wanted the best job done, the best information out there, and prepare all of you like you should be. Our staff in Washoe County in the Community Development Section is superior to any and all. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is there any public comment on the resolution?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I say thank you to Bill real quick?
What's that?
Can I say thank you to Bill real quick?
Oh, yes, Mr. Edwards, please.
Thank you, Bill.
Anyone else want to say thank you to Mr. ...
That's the shortest speech I've ever heard from an attorney.
Okay, if there's no further public comment, then I would ask for a motion on the...
I move.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Chesney?
Yes.
And a second by Francine. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously. All right, eight C is report on 2035 regional water balance model projections of water supply and demand, wastewater flow and treatment capacity, water reclamation and effluent disposal capacity, and we'd ask Jim Smitherman, the Water Resources Program Manager, please, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jim Smitherman. I'm a Washoe County employee. I work for the Western Regional Water Commission and its advisory board, the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Here with me today is John Enlow from Truckee Meadows Water Authority, so we're going to team up and address some of the questions that you had for us last December, particularly questions about water supply and demand, wastewater treatment capacity, and management of treated wastewater effluent. What I'll cover is largely from the regional water management plan. Oops. There we go. There we go. That's a picture of the table of contents. I'll be drawing mostly from Chapter 2 on Water Resources, Chapter 4 on wastewater and water quality planning, Chapter 6 on population forecasts, projections of water demand and wastewater flow. This plan is really high-level. For example, every two years, there's a consensus population forecast that's generated, and that comes to the Regional Water Commission for a comparison with the water supply, sustainable water resources actually, that are identified in the water plan. So, what we do is estimate what the water demand is going to be associated with the 20-year population forecast, and then make a comparison. And then the Water Commission makes a determination as to whether or not the resources identified in the plan can serve the projected population forecast. You can see from the slide that the resources identified in the plan are projected to serve with access, the population forecasted for 20 years out. Now, the version of the plan that I'm using was prepared last year. It's the most recent update that we have, and it will go out for public review later this month. It contains a water balance map. There's a picture of it. It's pretty hard to read, but just so you know what it contains, is a distribution of that 20-year water demand into six planning regions. Those planning regions are coincident with the wastewater service areas of the six wastewater treatment plants in our region. The water balance also projects the wastewater flows from the homes and businesses that would be projected to use the water 20 years out. So, that is a scenario of the future that we use for planning purposes. One use of the water balance is to identify subregions that might have a surplus or a deficit in water supply or wastewater capacity. You can see over on the right-hand column where there are some surpluses and deficits that are listed. Now, at this point, I'd like to turn the mic over to John Enlow. He'll talk about water supply and demand, and then I'll pick it back up and talk about wastewater.
Yes, Mr. Enlow, would you come forward, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Enlow. I'm the Director of Natural Resources for the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. Thank you for having us here tonight. Just for a little bit of history, this graph shows the historical population and the green bars compared to the annual water usage in the blue line. And really, the conclusion that I want you to draw from this is that our water usage today is less than it was 15 years ago. And this is really a national trend. You see it all over, but I think this community can be commended because they really have a very good conservation ethic. And there's, people are just smart about water use. They realize we live in a desert, and it's really reflected in the water use as this community has continued to grow, or water use has gone down over time. Jim talked about the future projections, so this 20-year population projection, it shows an increase of about 100,000 people over the next 20 years, and from a water use standpoint, that's about an additional 20,000 acre-feet per year. So, roughly, on average, 1,000 acre-feet a year is what this community is growing in terms of water demand. Just to try to put things in perspective, what we wanted to show here is actually how little the Truckee Meadows uses of the Truckee River water supply. The green pie is Tamwa's water demand. The red is the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, so the water that flows to Pyramid Lake. The blue is the Truckee Carson Irrigation District, so there's a lot of regulations in place that dictate whether the water goes to Pyramid Lake or out to Fallon and Fernley, and the purple is other. But really, the point I wanted to try to get across here is the relatively small amount of water that the Truckee Meadows community uses out of the Truckee River for its water I think you've, everybody's well aware of this, but I wanted to point out some key issues. So, Tamwa and the community benefit from the upstream reservoirs, so that includes Lake Tahoe, Prosser, Boca, and Stampede. And we show on this slide the green reservoirs, Independence Lake and Donner Lake, because Tamwa owns 100% of the water storage rights in those two reservoirs. So, that's a huge asset that this community has for drought protection into the future. And on December 1st of 2015, I'm sure you've heard that the Truckee River Operating Agreement went into effect. That's just a huge game changer for this community that I think most people don't truly understand, but it gives us two to three times more drought storage in the federal reservoirs, Stampede, Boca, and Prosser, that we can store and carry over in drought years. And so, what TROA does is, when the flows in the Truckee River are very small, like 2015, we were actually able to store water in those upstream reservoirs and carry it over into 2016. And as growth continues to occur in this community, the amount of water that we could store in those upstream reservoirs, it also grows. So, we're not using the same bucket of water for a growing population. That bucket grows as the population grows as well. So, TROA, our privately-owned stored water in Donner and Independence Lakes, and our use of groundwater when we need it, really provides this community with a very resilient water supply, even looking at very severe drought situations way worse than 2015. We've done projections 20 years out, looking at 2015, 20 years in a row. And with TROA and our privately-owned stored water, we can continue to supply a growing community. So, from a storage standpoint and a drought supply standpoint, we have a very strong water supply. A question that we always get is, what about water rights? And what this is a graph of, it's a representation of the amount of water rights that are available on the Truckee River system. It's 224,000 acre-feet. What you need to under, that amount is fixed. It's not gonna change. So, when developers come in with water rights, they've acquired it from somewhere else. There's not new water rights being granted for development. But what we'd like you to get out of this picture is, what is changing over time is the manner of use of the water. So, Tamwa's water rights are represented in the red bar. Agricultural water rights are represented in the green bar. So, over time, the manner of use of the water has changed from agricultural to municipal use. So, basically, water that was used in potato farms, in Spanish Springs, and growing hay and alfalfa, and double diamond, that manner of use has changed from agricultural, and now it's being used for homes and businesses and so forth. So, the amount of water rights is fixed. Just wanted to make that clear. And as you can see, I mean, that bar in 2015, there's about 45,000 acre-feet or so of water rights represented by that. Will all of those water rights be converted to municipal use for homes and businesses? Probably not. You've got the ranchettes in the southwest and so forth. People like to keep their agricultural rural communities going, but a large portion of those will be converted to municipal use in the future. Tamwa, we hold about 6,500 acre-feet of those water rights. We bank water for the benefit of developers. There's over 10,000 acre-feet of water rights that we bank for developers. So, when they come forward with a project, those water rights are basically in our name, but they're ready to be converted and used for a will-serv commitment when they finalize a map. So, there's about 45,000 acre-feet of those Truckee River water rights. A gentleman here mentioned water from Fish Springs, the Honey Lake Project. There's 8,000 acre-feet of water that has yet to be committed there. So, 45,000, 50,000 acre-feet of water rights still available for this community, and we're growing at about 1,000 acre-feet a year, just to put it into perspective. I think I'll just turn it over to Jim, and then we'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Could I ask a quick question?
Sure. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
When you made a statement about the storage capacity growing over time, how does the storage capacity grow? Is it the storage capacity that we acquire? I mean, the storage is fixed, is whatever is gonna be in the dams and the reservoirs up there.
Right. It's the amount of storage that Tamwa is able to accumulate for drought purposes that we can carry over from year after year after year. So, in 2015, when all those lakes were way down, Tamwa had quite a bit of water stored in there for the benefit of this community. And just to put it into perspective, so 2015, the worst year on record, we used, I think, I believe it was 11,600 acre-feet of that storage. We had over 40,000 acre-feet of storage capacity available, and we build on that storage. We can build on that storage every year. So, it's a lot of storage. If there's a drought, we can continue, we only use a fraction of it, so it can continue to grow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enlow.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Smitherman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see. Last December, you asked me some questions about wastewater treatment plant capacity that I couldn't answer, but I promised to come back. So, I wanted to come back and report to you in person. In our planning region, and I'm gonna refer to this table, hopefully to address your questions. In our planning region, the average single-family home produces about 200 gallons per day of wastewater. In the South Truckee Meadows, if you look at the first line, the difference between the current flow to that wastewater treatment plant and the plant capacity is about 900,000 gallons per day. So, theoretically, using that assumption, which is not a good assumption to make, if all that capacity was used to serve single, average, single-family homes, there'd be capacity for about 4,500 homes. Now, I'm gonna retract that because one of the engineers is gonna come down here and grab me by the throat, because facility planning for wastewater treatment plants is far more complex than that. But you can take these numbers, and you can do the math yourself, but before you apply those to, you know, keeping score when you're reviewing tentative maps, I would check with the wastewater engineers. They can give you the details for the facility plans that I just kinda scratched the surface of when I was putting together this table. So, the only facility or line on this graph, on this table, that we can realistically reduce to a number of units is the Spanish Springs Collection System. It's the next-to-the-bottom line, and that's because that is controlled by an agreement with the city of Sparks for capacity at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. So, let's see, if the agreement is worth about 8,500 units, and so far, 41, 75 units have been used up, there's roughly capacity for 7,500 units, and that would be, not counting any of the septic conversions. There's about 1,800 septics, I think, that are planned to be converted over some period of time. So, that would be in excess of this. The rest of them, I would caution you not to use the simple math that I did for the first line. Plant expansions cost a lot of money. For example, the, again, referring up to the first line, the treatment expansion in the South Truckee Meadows that would be needed by approximately the year 2021 or 2022, based on the growth projections that the facility planners used, is estimated about $50 to $60 million. So, when you plan to expand a wastewater treatment plant, you also have to plan to expand your capacity to reuse or to dispose of the treated effluent that's discharged from the plant. That plant down in the South Truckee Meadows is 100% reuse, so it doesn't discharge to a creek or a river like the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. It goes to irrigate golf courses, turf grass, landscape medians, and that sort of thing. So, there is, there's a lot of planning that takes place to make sure that all of that treated wastewater effluent can be accommodated. So, the cost of the anticipated treatment expansion, plus the complexity of coming up with places to reuse the treated effluent, is driving Reno Sparks and Washoe County engineers to work together strategically. So, I don't have the answers to all the questions that they're working on now with their strategic planning, but they're working together because we've got different plants, different parts of the region. Some may have strengths that could offset the weaknesses of some others in addressing some of the issues that'll be coming with growth. Some of the alternatives that are being considered are, include higher levels of treatment. Again, that's gonna cost money, so we wanna get the best bang for the buck. But treating wastewater effluent to a higher level in conjunction with some recently approved regulations to the state's reclaimed water regulations will allow for expanded uses of the reclaimed water, such as groundwater recharge. And that would be groundwater recharge into an aquifer that, over a period of time, and travel of this water underground, it would be purified to the point where it could be reproduced and used for drinking water. There are also alternatives that involve industrial users that are outside of our immediate planning area. So, I'll close with this. When you're presented with a development plan or tentative map, it usually comes with a commitment from service providers, usually from Tamwa, and also, hopefully, from a wastewater service provider. That commitment to serve involved a lot of rigorous analysis by some engineers and people who are technically far more knowledgeable than me. If it doesn't come with a commitment to serve, it might be a good reason to, or a good time to ask why, and to look into that a little bit more. Washoe County has a highly qualified staff of wastewater engineers who plan and operate three county-owned wastewater treatment plants. They operate at a level of detail that's far greater than me as far as the facility planning. So, I'll bet that if you asked, they could bring answers to more detailed questions than what I've answered tonight pertaining to any of the particular areas or treatment plants that you're talking about. So, at that point, I won't take up any more of your time with the talk and address your questions, or Mr. Enlow, I'm sure would be happy to come back up.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Haran.
Could you go back to the Spanish Springs and do the math for me there? I don't quite understand that.
No, it doesn't come up to 7,500 units. Build out of current zoning, let's see, so the latest facility plans, build out of current zoning would be roughly 7,500 units. So, that would be, that would leave excess capacity in addition to, or above and beyond the 84, 95 units.
Well, as I read it, and I'll tell you what my question is.
Okay.
You've got capacity, 8, 4, 9, 5.
Right.
And you've got current use, current usage, 4,100.
Right.
So, what is the 7,500? That's additional units?
No, 7,500 would be the current units plus future units.
So, how does that...
And that would, then that would get you to build out...
41, new units of 75, add up to 84.
It doesn't. You've got excess capacity in the agreement, is what the numbers look like to me.
Okay. I'm not gonna belabor the point, just the math doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. If you subtract...
That's okay.
41, 75 from 7,500, that gives you the number that you have left to go.
Another time, somebody can explain it to me.
Well, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to have to announce that I have to go to Las Vegas for another committee meeting, but I'm gonna turn the gavel over to our vice chair. So, Sarah, I'd like you to handle this from now on, if you could?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any further questions? I guess I, with my Commissioner Haran here, I, you know, at some point, we would like to make sure, if you could provide that formula to how those figures come, I mean, math is math. It needs to equal something, so if we can get a better understanding of where those numbers are derived from, and as well as what's a capacity, where are we going to be over capacity, and such, so. A clear explanation of these numbers.
Okay, you know, I think that those explanations would best come from the wastewater engineers who are in charge of the facility planning.
Okay, if you could pass that on, then.
Okay, yeah, I will. I think they're in the room.
So, if you're in the room, better math. Any other questions?
I'll comment. Just like to thank Mr. Smitherman for getting back to us like he said he would, and I really appreciate it.
said he would, and I really appreciate it. And also from Tamwa, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Anything else before we move on? Okay. Okay, we're now into public hearings. Our next item is 9A, tentative map case number WTM 16-002, Golden Mason North. Hearing discussion and possible action to approve the subdivision of two parcels totaling 119.76 acres into 115-lot subdivision and a special use permit case WSUP 16-0002, Golden Mesa South Sewer Lift Station. Hearing discussion and possible action to approve special use permit for a sewer lift station to support the development of the Golden Mason North subdivision. And our planner is Trevor Lloyd.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, can you call for disclosures at this point?
Oh, I'm, thank you. Any disclosures from commissioners?
Madam Chair, I did receive a phone call on item 9A from somebody involved with the applicant. I can't remember exactly who it was, but I declined to communicate or discuss it with the individual, saying that I would hear the facts at the meeting.
I did receive a voicemail, but did not respond to the representative representing the applicant.
Yes, for the record, I live in Golden Valley. I'm the current president of Golden Valley Property Owners Association. I, we had the applicant come to our property owners' meeting, so I was present at the meeting. I was also present at the North Valley Citizen Advisory Board when they spoke, and I did personally receive a copy of a couple of the emails that are in the packet, but I did not reply to anyone directly.
Couple follow-up questions, please, Madam Chair, for the record. Ms. Doncic, is, can you describe what that association looks like in terms of its membership and how it gets money? For example, is it like a homeowners' association that's going to be collecting mandatory assessments from any new units that are in the area? Or is it more of like an informational neighborhood-type association that gets information out to the people that live there?
Is it informational type of association for anybody that lives there, whether they, we have voluntary dues that we ask that help us put out our newsletter, minutes, dumpsters that we do once a year, but it's not required? Anybody that lives in the valley can attend the meetings and speak to any issues?
So, that association does not stand, for example, to gain a bunch of mandatory property assessments or something like that if new units were approved?
No, sir, I'm under the impression that the new development, if it's approved, would be under CCNRs and their own homeowners' association.
Thank you. And does any of your involvement in that association prevent you from being impartial if you were to continue hearing this matter?
No, sir, I feel I can be impartial and make judgments on the facts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, quick question. You know, we're a seven-member board, we're now down to four. What is the quorum requirements?
We're currently a six-member board.
Well, okay.
Well, you're a five-member board right now because Commissioner Prove resigned, and you have the absence of the other member as well. So, you have five. Four is your quorum requirement. And if there are any other issues concerning the vote that come up, I'll flag those as this moves along.
Thank you.
Mr. Lloyd.
Thank you, Madam Acting Chair, and members of the commission. For the record, Trevor Lloyd with Planning and Development. And please excuse my voice, I feel like I'm losing it, and I hope I don't. As discussed, this item before you tonight is a request for a tentative map, tentative subdivision map for the establishment of 115 lots. The property is located in Golden Valley, north of Golden Valley Road, east of Estates Road, and on the north and south sides of Indian Lane. The plan submitted conformed with all of the policies of the North Valleys Area Plan, which is part of the Washoe County Master Plan. And to give a little bit of background, a little bit of history, I have had an opportunity to work with the applicants for quite some time. Their original request was actually, they're quite different than what you see tonight. In fact, they had very different plans in mind. However, after a very careful review of the master plan, specifically the North Valleys Area Plan, it was identified that those standards were very stringent and unique to Golden Valley in that nowhere else can we find, is there a policy that requires or limits a development from utilizing the common open space standards? And that is under NV 5.1 of the North Valleys Area Plan. What that's basically saying is that any development has to meet the standards that are consistent with the surrounding developments, and that being a development of one dwelling unit per acre, essentially, the low-density suburban minimum standards. So, that being said, the applicants have come back with a, essentially in this case, a revised tentative map with lots that are a minimum of 35,000 square feet, an average lot size of 39,984 square feet, which is just a little bit smaller than one acre. However, the overall density is 1.04 dwelling units per acre. There is a proposal for just under five acres of common area, and that's specifically the three stormwater detention ponds, as well as a large common area to the east of this development, as well as the potential for common area to be utilized for an equestrian trail along the east edge of the property. As I was preparing for this meeting, I came across a very interesting zoning map. There has been a lot of concern from some of the neighbors that Washoe County is trying to change the character of Golden Valley. What this map represents is a zoning map dating back to 1963. That's 54 years ago. What you can see on the overhead is that zoning back in 1963 is consistent with the same zoning that's there now. And we no longer use that A1 category, but essentially, A1 is the equivalent of low-density suburban, which is on that property now. That's one dwelling unit per acre. So, this is not, as you can see, this is not a request to change zoning, to change the density, but rather, this is an entitlement that has been in existence for 54 years, an entitlement that has been recognized by the property owners, been recognized by the assessors, and has been assessed as such all that time. The applicants are coming forward now, and they're asking to develop this property in a similar manner, in a similar fashion, that they have been allowed to develop this property for 54 years, that is in keeping with the surrounding properties, that it's in keeping with the lot sizes of the surrounding uses, as well as the zoning and master plan policies. I've also included some language here that comes from the North Valleys Area Plan, specifically the Golden Valley character, I'm sorry, Golden Valley Community Character Statement. What you'll find is that the proposed request with the lot layout, the overall design, is certainly in keeping with the character of the Golden Valley area, as well as in keeping with all of the policies of the area plan and the provisions of the Washoe County Development Code. As with any development, there are impacts. And certainly, you know, this project is not immune from having those impacts. One such impact is that certainly, as you can see from the numbers on the overhead, the schools are currently over capacity, specifically Alice Smith Elementary School, as well as North Valleys High School. Surprisingly, O'Brien Middle School is well under capacity, so they can certainly accommodate the additional schoolchildren that will be generated. It's likely that Alice Smith, as you can see, it's currently at 110% of capacity. It's likely that Alice Smith will be required to go to a multi-track system in the short term. However, according to the school district, they are working very diligently to eliminate this as quickly as possible. And I'm sure you, as a planning commission, are aware that there are funds that will soon be available to construct a number of new schools within, throughout Washoe County, not the least of which is certainly, it's very needed in the North Valley. So, you'll see new construction in a short matter of time. Now, one of the other big issues that we've heard a lot about throughout the community input process is the issue of increased traffic. Per the traffic study that was submitted by the applicants, the development will generate approximately 1,600 ADT. That's 120 AM peak hour and 158 PM peak hour trips. But keep in mind, this traffic study was originally done and incorporated the entire project, the entire property, and that was based on 158 single-family units. So, what we're actually seeing is that this ADT is actually very conservative, it's relatively high. Now, Estates Road will carry the bulk of that new traffic load. However, some of that traffic will be, you know, diverted east, you know, and access onto Spearhead and down to Golden Valley. Also, the proposed subdivision has been designed with six different points of access, which helps disperse the traffic so that you're not going to overload a single road or intersection. On this overhead, this is a graphic that shows those six different access points. Again, three of them are directly onto Estates Road. Two of them will connect to Indian Lane, and the sixth one there will connect onto Brave Lane. And as I had mentioned, not all of the traffic will be extending down onto Estates Road. Some of that will be diverted over to Spearhead. One other point of concern, or I don't know if it's necessarily a point of concern, is basically the street standard design that has been proposed at the request of Washoe County. And we've been wrestling with this issue. You'll find there is language in the area plan that encourages the use of more natural V-ditch, and, but staff is requiring the use of curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And primarily, that's to address safety as well as maintenance concerns. Keep in mind that the request is for Washoe County, for an offer of dedication of this roadway and then the streets to Washoe County, in which case, Washoe County would be responsible for the maintenance of these roads. Therefore, we're requiring the use of curb and gutter. The subdivision has been designed to include three stormwater detention ponds, as well as one common area, as you can see, along the east side of the property. Those, it's anticipated that those are essentially built to handle, you know, stormwater events and detain those stormwaters on-site in the event of a large flood. In addition to the tentative map, there's a request for a special use permit for a sewer lift station. This is located on the southern property known as Golden Mesa South. The sewer lift station would be located pretty close to the corner of Golden Valley Road and Estates Road. We don't anticipate many impacts. As you can see from the section view on the overhead, most of that equipment will be underground, and only a small equipment and some pipes will be located and be visible above ground. It will be fenced for security purposes, but it will be relatively innocuous. Also, it will be operated and maintained, and offered for dedication to the city of Reno. The sewer from this site will be conveyed to the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. This item was presented to the Golden Valley Property Owners Association that Ms. Doncic alluded to on February 9th at their meeting. And it was also heard by the North Valley Citizen Advisory Board at their February 13th meeting. There was a fairly decent turnout at that meeting. There was a significant number of concerns raised. Folks wanted to maintain their rural lifestyle. We heard a good deal of that with preference for V-ditches. Also, there was concern that, you know, people have been using this for horses, and that this area is considered, even though it's a suburban designation, there's a rural feel, and people wanted to make sure that, you know, that there was an understanding that this is horse property, right? Concerns were raised with traffic, there was concerns raised with schools. Access from Indian Lane was a big concern. People along Indian Lane did not want that to be used as access. And clearly, the big issue in the room was flooding, specifically downstream, Swan Lake, Lemon Valley. Also, there's concerns that simply more community discussion is needed, schools, traffic, all of those issues. I wanted to bring your attention to additional conditions. Staff would like to add one from planning, and one came late from engineering. The first would be new condition, one are that final construction drawings submitted for each final map comply with all the design standards enumerated in NV 5.1 through NV 5.8 of the North Valleys Area Plan, and that's to ensure that those design standards are complied with. Thought it would be good to keep that as a condition so that when the final drawings come in, the applicant is aware of those requirements. And secondly, the condition from, a new condition from engineering, that development shall account for the increased volume of runoff generated, as well as floodplain storage volumes within the 100-year floodplain. The hydrology report will identify required volumes mitigation to achieve no net increase of water surface within Swan Lake. And this is important because this issue has come up, that development will increase the flooding, particularly at Swan Lake, and this condition will assure that that does not happen. Finally, we, staff noticed a minimum of, we're required to notice a minimum of 30 of the adjoining neighbors. We went out 500 feet, captured 115 separate, different property owners. Keep in mind that there was a courtesy notice that was sent out initially, and then a notice for this meeting. So, two notices have gone out specific to this agenda item. The planning commission is asked to meet all of the required findings. Staff is confident that all of these findings can and will be made, and offers a recommendation of approval for this requested tentative map. If you see so fit, staff offers a following motion for your consideration. And I have one for the tentative map, as well as a special use permit. I'll keep that up there. With that, I am available to answer any questions. The applicants, I believe, have a presentation as well, and they can answer your questions also.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Before we go to the applicant presentation, is there any questions for staff? Francine.
Yes, Trevor, first off, could you show us, now, I want to say thank you for the additional equestrian path that was not part of any of the previous discussions. Can you bring it up on a map and show exactly where this equestrian path, which was not previously discussed, is now on your, and I think it's like, what, 10 feet wide? Is that what you've discussed in here?
Correct. And I can't give you the exact location. I'm leaving that to the applicant. It's going to be a requirement that with the final design, they'll have to show it.
Okay, well, I do have another question regarding the traffic study. I went to the Planning and Development Site, and I looked up the 333 pages that are listed for the application. And on the, in that traffic study, there is no mention of any access onto Brave. Now, coming in our staff report, it shows that there's an access row onto Brave. What is the change in that? And to me, you question the validity of the traffic study if you've changed where the access points are.
Again, I'm going off of the proposal, as you can see above here. There is access off of Brave. That has been my understanding. The applicant is here, they can probably address the traffic study better than I can at this time.
I'll wait for further questions after the applicant. Thank you.
And, Mr. Lloyd, questions that I have in terms of the area plan with your reference to curb and gutter? And you've heard me ask this question numerous times, area plans supersede everything else, correct?
That is correct. I will say, though, I will say, though, the area plan is not absolute in that specific discussion. In fact, it's encouraged, it's mentioned that, you know, natural V-ditches are encouraged, but they're certainly not required.
Okay. Because I'm assuming that you have driven that area, and do you see a lot of sidewalks?
You really don't. Now, and I would like to mention something, the exterior of the property will keep those natural ditches in place, and there will not be sidewalks on the outside of the development. All of that will take place on the inside.
Interior, okay. And then with reference to access points out of this development, the bottom line is everything will end up on Golden Valley Road.
That is my understanding, unless you have a four-wheeler and you want to go.
Well, we won't go there. I mean, but in, and along with Commissioner Doncheck, I don't see that addressed in terms of the traffic load onto Golden Valley and then subsequently onto 395.
It will, yes, that's where the traffic is going to load. And you're right, there are concerns with the volumes of traffic currently, especially 395, that intersection. And my hope and my understanding is that there are future plans in the works to address those concerns. We're having traffic issues throughout North Valleys. It's becoming a concern.
And can, one last thing before the applicant presentation, and then we reserve the right to bring you back for further questions, is could you explain to, just to reinforce and reiterate, that a tentative map is the beginning of a very long process? Can you spell that out for the community? Because as we have brought before you and brought to your attention numerous times is that when these come forward and they have all of these, you know, possible plans and everything, people think that homes, they're going to break ground for houses in a month. So if you could address that, please.
And that's a really good point, too. What you find, and I can't speak to the market right now, the climate, but what you find is that this doesn't happen overnight. Typically, a subdivision like this, it takes quite a while before even the first final map is recorded and construction begins. And even in that situation, typically, you're looking at a phased development. It'll probably be, in this case, it may have several phases. We do have some tentative maps similar to this that have been going through construction for, you know, 10, 15, sometimes 20 years. And that could very likely happen in this situation, too.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before applicant presen, okay. The applicant, are you here to make your presentation?
It's shorter than Mr. Lloyd here. Good evening, Madam Acting Chair, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. We do have a quick presentation with Golden Mesa North subdivision. I'd like to thank Mr. Lloyd for his comprehensive.
We need to identify, you need to.
Oh, excuse me. Mimi Fuji Strickler for the record. And I do have a project team with me this evening to answer questions. We have our traffic engineer.
And we need to make sure that you're speaking into.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yes.
Is that better? It's on, yeah. Sit on. Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So again, Mimi Fuji Strickler for the record with Golden Mesa North. And I was just saying, I'd like to thank Mr. Lloyd for his comprehensive presentation with information on the subdivision. As Mr. Lloyd had pointed out, our project is located at the corner of Golden Valley Drive and Estates Road. You can see the two parcels in green there. We wanted to make sure it stood out on the aerial map. And it's just north of Golden Valley High School. This is the project map. As you can see, it's laid on the aerial in green. The upper parcel is 99 acres and it's approximately 95 lots. And the north parcel is 20 acres and it's approximately 20 lots. As Mr. Lloyd had mentioned, that the tentative map is to establish 115 lots and about 120-plus acres. As he also stated, that the average lot size is 39,984. The minimum lot size is 35,000 square feet with a maximum lot size of 113, excuse me, I'm catching a cold, so I apologize if my voice is in and out, 113,700 square feet. I'd like to talk a little bit about the design elements this evening. As Trevor had mentioned, that we have curb and gutter and sidewalks. Sidewalks will be on one side of the street only. The Estates Road will remain a roadside channel. There will be no streetlights, as most subdivisions have streetlights associated with them. One of the nice things, I guess, for the rural areas, that in Washoe County, you do not have to have streetlights within the subdivisions. The development project will contain sewer, water, and storm drains. And as Mr. Lloyd had mentioned, it does have three detention ponds, as he had noted on his map. And also, there will be revision to the existing floodplain. Currently, the existing floodplain is just a broad-brush stroke done by FEMA. We've had it restudied, and that now, with the new configuration, the new floodplain that you see in gray up there will reflect a more accurate floodplain that reflects existing conditions, hydrology, and topography. Currently, that conditional letter of map revision is in with Washoe County Engineering. And once re-reviewed by the Engineering Department, it will be forwarded to FEMA in Region 9 in San Francisco. Also, on this map, as we were talking about, does this have a pointer? That's okay. Let's see. We can get this. Unfortunately, Commissioners, you won't be able to see when I point with this one.
Sometimes we can.
Okay, I know, thank you. Other end, huh? It's late this evening. In talking with Commissioner Doncheck's request for equestrian trails, we did go to the Golden Valley Homeowners Association meeting, along with the Washoe County North Valley Citizens' Advisory Board. And that was one request that we heard several times, is the request for equestrian trails throughout the subdivision. And we're proposing, as this street right here is Arrowhead and it has an access, we're proposing an equestrian trail here to come out to Spearhead so that the residents can come up this way. So they can continue on here, across this path, and then up out into the BLM land. So that was something that we will be adding to the map. So that'll come here, cross here, and straight up. As Trevor had noted before, we want to talk about those detention basins. We do have three. We've got one up in the corner here at Estates. We've got this one down here on Pine Night. And we do have this one down here on this lower southerly parcel. The drainage, the existing surface drainage will be captured. It will come into this drainage here. It'll also be captured into the storm drain, which will drain to this detention basin here, and then down to this detention bond here where it'll be captured. A lot of the sheet flow that's currently coming this way through the parcels will also be captured along Estates Road and drained out. Lastly, as part of our project, we do have the sewer lift station, which we have in for a special use permit. As Mr. Lloyd had mentioned, it's located right there on the northeast corner of Golden Valley Drive and Estates Road. And it will be fenced with approximately 200 square feet. And as Mr. Lloyd said, it will be maintained by the city of Reno. And that's located right here in this small area on this parcel here. And with that, I'd like to open it up to questions with our Commissioners.
Commissioner Horens.
Can we go back to the previous slide where you had the revised floodplain on there? Could you use your pointer? What was the old floodplain?
These are the extents of the current floodplain here in the blue. And this is in the shaded kind of purplish-gray area will be the new proposed FEMA floodplain.
Now, has this been run through FEMA or just your ideas?
No, currently, Washoe County is reviewing the conditional letter of map revision, and that will be forwarded to FEMA for final review.
So it hasn't gone there yet?
Has the county forwarded that? No, so the county's still reviewing.
Thank you.
So if I may tap onto that, so until that floodplain is, the revisions are approved, the existing floodplain is what is on the books and drives the development in that area?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Doncheck?
Going back to the traffic study, which is very, in the staff report, it's a very short capsulation, but going to the original application that was provided to planning and development, again, I wanted on the record that that traffic study that was originally supplied in your application did not state any access going onto Brave. There was the access onto Indian, which is concerned, but there was nothing on Brave. And now, again, I'm concerned about the validity of that traffic study, since you're putting things into Brave and not everybody's going to want to go. Now you're talking about going out Brave, down Rain Dance, and out Spearhead, and that changes the traffic impacts along Golden Valley Road.
Do you have to speak on the traffic? Is Mr. Lauren Chilson?
Good evening, Lauren Chilson, Principal Traffic Engineer at Traffic Works. The traffic study does, in fact, include Brave Lane in the tentative map. That's shown on Figure 3 site plan in the traffic study, following the bulk of the text there. That roadway serves, if you look at the tentative map, really only about four or five lots that are on that side. That's about the amount of traffic that would go out Brave Lane and over to Spearhead. For that reason, it's not a study intersection. That may be why you were concerned, is it carries so few trips that it wasn't deemed a necessary study intersection. It's like we're saying, you know, less than 20 trips per day on that roadway. Those trips would be going out to Spearhead, excuse me. Otherwise, those trips would be coming out Indian and in the future phase over to Estates, a little bit further south. So it is included and has been accounted for.
And also, I believe you made a correction, but I want on the record that originally the traffic study listed Golden Valley traffic at 40 miles an hour when it's only 35?
That's correct. We did revise that. It does not affect the conclusions or the analysis of the level of service analysis, but that correction was made in the report.
And going into the development with the access up Arrowhead, Rain Dance, Spearhead, which are now not going to be paved roads, it's hard to tell on your maps how far your property line is from the existing property lines. And considering safety, what about turnarounds? I know that we've got Waste Management, FedEx, UPS that can get up there, but what kind of room are you leaving for emergency vehicle turnarounds up in the end of those, each of those?
I will need the civil engineer to answer that question.
Francine, that would do fire turnarounds as well, right?
Right, that's what I'm basically referring to.
Good evening, Commissioners. Gary Gazellis with Axion Engineering. I didn't quite understand exactly what you were asking. Maybe you can explain to me.
Well, you have three roads that are now not, that are dirt roads, access that can go directly up into BLM and have wide turns for vehicles if they go up there. And when I'm thinking about developments where areas have been, had free access and now are going to be restricted by development, I want to know how much room you're leaving as regards to safety. I mean, I'm sure the Waste Management truck can probably turn around FedEx, UPS, but I'm concerned about emergency vehicles turning around a fire truck or something that has to go in there. I don't, I can't tell between what your development is and the picture of the properties, how much room you're leaving for actual access for safety reasons.
Sorry, excuse me. We're leaving actual access the way it is. I think you're talking about the east side of the lots, the back of our lots, maybe?
East side, each of those three streets, yes, would be ending up by houses.
We're proposing to leave the existing access as it is. And whatever Amy Ray says we need to do for fire access, that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
If I may, and Trevor, you can add to this, is that Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District shall meet requirements of Washoe County Code 60, including cul-de-sacs at 50-foot radiuses and fire flow at 1,000 to 1,500 gallons per minute, and that the CCNR shall be submitted to Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District for approval. So how are the issues of fire truck radius turnaround addressed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Each one of the final maps that are submitted, they go under strict scrutiny by all of the reviewing agencies, one of which is the Truckee Meadows Fire Department. And clearly, that is, that will certainly be addressed with the final map as conditioned by Amy Ray.
Thank you. Francine, do you have other questions?
I do. I just want clarification on the retaining wall, that it's going to be at the north side of the project adjacent to the, it's a three-foot high for 140 feet. There is a lot of, coming off BLM in that area, there's a lot of floodwater. It comes all the way off there. So I'm curious, where are the determination of just only 140 feet and how you're going to make sure you capture it and channel it where you want it to go? And then, of course, you said there's going to be ditches coming down Estates on, along all those driveways that are on the east side. Clarify for me, please, the depth and how you're going to ensure that the water that is channeled that way, that those ditches will be, meet the right standards so that we won't be flooding across the streets again?
Once again, Gary Gazellis, Axion Engineering. Our proposal is to intercept that water along the northerly property line with a channel. And the channel will take the water, part of it will go through the subdivision, actually, most of it will go through the subdivision down to the south, and some of it on the west, westerly half or so, maybe a little less, will go to Estates after it goes through the detention pond. The retaining wall was because I couldn't quite fit the channel the size I wanted in It's lower, so on the north side, the top of the wall's at grade and the ditch is a little lower, if that is clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just going back to schools, I'm just really curious, then in some of the previous availments, Trevor, that we put in, that, I'm sorry, I'm going back to Trevor here, in that we put in a disclosure that even though with all the funding coming in, that there's no guarantee that residents moving in here will be allowed to go to the school. Why wasn't that put into this one?
That disclosure has, in the past, it's been a condition of the Washoe County School District, and they did not feel it was necessary, for some reason, with this application to include that disclosure. Maybe it has to do with their plan for the multi-track system, you know, their expedited process for possible construction. I don't know, but it was not included.
Well, I'm only curious because it states on their strategies, assignments to the closest elementary, middle, whatever, with available capacity may be used for students in this development. So they're saying that these students may not be able to go to the closest schools. That's why I was asking the question.
If you feel comfortable and would like to add that condition, I think we can.
I think we need to add that condition.
Fair enough.
Clearly, I'm sure.
Yes.
Clearly, on the schools, I mean, Alice Smith is the most approximate to this, but as it says on there, for the middle school, where O'Brien Middle School, which is on Stead Boulevard, is only at 60% of capacity, I would expect that Stead Elementary is also at a lower capacity, because it's right next door to O'Brien Middle School. So, but I agree with Francine that I think that that going forward, regardless of WC1 and the ability to build schools, that that would be an appropriate condition that we would, maybe, Trevor, you could talk to the school board, you know, going, whoever does this review, that they enter that into, as a condition to all, I think it's almost common sense. And I think we can, I would certainly support adding it to this particular application.
And as you would note in the school report, you've seen now that we have moved, we moved away for many, many years from multi-track year-round, and now we're moving back to that. And the closest high school to this property, other than Golden Valley High School, which is right across the road, is Hug High School. So that, so then we would be putting more buses on 395. So that, so then we would be putting more buses on 395. Other questions for the applicant?
I'm gonna go back, because WC1 is not gonna be an immediate solution to their problem.
No, it will not. It'll take years to implement. Francine?
Yes, I have a question for the applicant regarding the sewer lift station.
Gary Gazellis, Axion Engineering.
Well, I see here, and I just wanna get some clarification, I see that you're gonna be putting a lift station in, and it's gonna be sized to possibly serve other areas if for some reason there's a catastrophe and some of the toxic people have to convert. But then it says on Page Seven, Number Six, "It can be upsized to accommodate flows from neighboring existing homes should they become a need." So you're building the lift station to possibly be assistance in the future if necessary, but you're not building the actual pipeline itself to meet that standard at this point? So you would think of, so it would be more cost and tearing up the road in the future if they had to convert? Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't believe so. The lift station, you don't wanna over-design the lift station, 'cause it won't function properly. So that statement is saying that, you know, down the road, I don't know how many homes there would be hooking in, but we could replace the pumps and move more sewage out of the area. The infrastructure is already in place in Golden Valley Road, and I believe it has more capacity than is being used right now.
Can I respond? And in my discussions with our utilities expert, Tim Simpson, he mentioned that the sizing of the pipes can accommodate additional capacity, quite a bit, and those, I believe they're eight-inch lines, and that should be able to accommodate quite a few additional in addition to that from the subdivision. All right, thank you. I think that's my questions for now. I'm sure I'll have more later. Thank you.
Mr. Chesney, you look like you're contemplating something.
Yeah, I got a question for the applicant. This drainage and stormwater discharge program, how much of stormwater runoff and drainage are you gonna be, what capacity are you gonna have to hold it on your own site without eventually going on down to Swan Lake?
I believe the answer to that was conditioned through staff. We have to retain our increased volume of flow for, help me, Trevor, 10-day storm, was it?
Let me find the condition.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, well, he's looking for that particular one. In our last month's meeting, we had questions about stormwater and floodwater, and there is a difference between stormwater and floodwater that I think we need to add into the discussion.
Yes, and Trevor, while you're looking for that, is that, do the conditions include stormwater and floodwater?
I may need to consult with our in-house expert.
Madam Chair, maybe, maybe while we're in pause here.
Yes.
I could have a question for counsel. In an earlier public comment, there was a reference to Washoe County Code 411041657. Do you have any comment as to the validity of the statement as to whether it was a violation I guess it's the applicability of that code is the specific issue that we got here.
Yes, there are one, two, seven subsections in that code section. The issue that they're discussing right now is mitigation, and what they're talking about is mitigation, that's the first subsection. Any project that creates displacement has to, when it comes to stormwater discharge, has to be limited to pre-development conditions related to peak flows, and with flood storage, has to provide flood storage volume mitigation to achieve no adverse impact. So in other words, whatever the impacts are right now, when they build it out, it has to hold enough water in a flood event in order that it doesn't increase the flooding on the downhill properties. As far as whether or not the designs meet those standards or not, those are engineering questions. I'm not an engineer. That's for them to decide. And I, and my understanding in the staff report is that the assessment at this point is that it meets the requirements. So that's the information that I have.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
I'll ask Dwayne to step to the podium and respond to that question.
Sorry, for the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects for Washoe County. And the question before you is a complicated question. It's complicated in the fact that what we're experiencing right now in the region is a lot of pain and suffering in certain areas, and certainly within the closed hydrobasins of Swan Lake and potentially Silver and White Lake. I do wanna be clear, though, that all of our development codes are predicated and require that new development mitigate the impacts of stormwater. Stormwater is different in, water is water, but there is certainly no way that you can design, you can build, and you can anticipate floodwaters in the way that can impact a community. What we do have is minimum requirements for stormwater impacts. All of our developments, all of our new developments require, are required to mitigate those impacts. This applicant, just like any other applicant, has submitted their tentative map to us, and using Washoe County Development Code, we verified that they have met those minimum requirements. This project is located in an area that ultimately drains to a closed basin, Swan Lake. So further, as you saw in the additional engineering condition that came in on my department, there is mitigation for those impacts, additional and further mitigation, I should say, for those impacts. That's a volumetric mitigation. So whereas the development has gone through and through engineering analysis has identified the routing and the detention required so that its onsite flows after construction don't exceed its offsite flows, it's gone, we've gone the further step to mitigate those volume impacts, because those are two different distinct things. Thank you for bringing that up. So the engineering condition 2VV requires that the increased stormwater runoff generated from this project be mitigated through a volumetric approach. That is a requirement that, when the final maps come in, that my department will make sure that they're adhered to through this review process. I hope that answers your questions.
It answers mine. Thank you.
Commissioner Huron.
How, you know, I guess I question our ability to measure that and condition it. That, I think, is my challenge. And I understand what you said, and I'm not challenging that thought process, but I just, I just wonder about our ability to really mitigate it and understand, you know, whether it's 100-year or 500-year or whatever, that we can guarantee, I guess maybe we can't guarantee, that we're not gonna create problems. That's my concern.
I don't know that there's an answer to that. I just express any concern.
The question I have is, with the existing FEMA map, which shows the floodplain as being significantly larger than the one that's drawn on the tentative map, how does that get mitigated? I mean, and there is development within that expanded floodplain, as it is recorded in FEMA maps currently.
The applicant in this case, again, to the Vice Chair, has gone through a process to evaluate those existing flood runoffs, the existing volumes of water that come into that FEMA-designated floodplain, and their impacts to it. Through that process, they've been able to identify through routing and through some grading changes, that they can take that floodplain, that wider and broader floodplain, if they bring that map back up, and through that effort, narrow that floodplain through their property only. They are not changing the floodplain upstream of their property. They're taking the same volumes of water that's running off of the upstream property. They're accepting those flood flows, those stormwater flows, those water flows onto their property. They're providing routing through their property in a engineered and designated fashion from what is different now with the existing natural floodplain. And then they are, on the west side of the property, broadening out that flow back to meet the existing and unchanged FEMA floodplain to the west. So they're only dealing with a floodplain change through the CLOMAR process on their development.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, were the same thought processes applied when we had development further north in Lemon Valley?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, are we applying the same conditions to this?
Understood.
That were applied to Lemon Valley, where obviously we have a problem.
All new development within Washoe County is conditioned to meet the current code requirements at the time that it's submitted. So any project that comes into Golden Valley today, comes into Lemon Valley, comes into the South Trucking Meadows, comes in anywhere, is gonna meet those same requirements.
We're not looking back, though. We don't know what those requirements were when we looked back.
Certainly through time, through understanding.
Right.
Through better modeling techniques, for instance, those requirements have changed and increased. What you see on your screen right up here, the additional engineering condition, is a perfect example of that outcome. So through that, we understand more now than we did 30, 40, 50 years ago, and we've increased those conditions.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff or the applicants before we open it up to public comment? Mr. Lloyd? Did you, you look like you were gonna say something.
Just waiting for the question.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We may call you back. So the chairman did not leave me his little step-by-step, so the next thing is to open it for public comment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now at public comment, and I do remind the audience that your comments will be addressed to the commission, to the board, and that, and we, all your comments will be recorded. We ask that you stay on point for the agenda item that is before us this evening, which is a tentative map, as well as a special use permit for a sewer lift. And then I also remind everyone that this is the beginning of a very long process. This is only a tentative map. There are no final maps as of yet, and you'll see final maps in probably, who knows when? Could be a year, could be two years, it could be longer than that. So we'll open it up with public comment, and public comment is limited to three minutes, and you'll see, and the timers are working. So you'll see these timers here that will count you down. Okay, thank you. If we could call the first public comment?
We have Jeff Nichols, followed by Tom Woebry.
And as always, we ask you to state your name for the record.
My name is Jeff Nichols. I live at 3145 Indian Lane. I'm a property owner there, along with my children. I've been flooded with thoughts about what you guys go through, and I wanna first start off by saying, you guys have a very tough job, and I totally respect all the things you do. I've realized the complexity of how some things can be so simple and yet so complex, and you have to mesh it together. So my hat's off to you there. But on a more personal note, when I bought property out there, along with my children, as you've noted, we had a certain lifestyle that we worked very hard to maintain. Okay, we worked our whole life. I planned on dining in my home there. And I want you to know that I am a pro-development, I'm a contractor, I've been a contractor in this community for over 30 years. I understand growth is inevitable. But what I don't understand is how we can go from a plan, which I bought out there, which was back in 2015, which had bridle paths and a very user-friendly, it had all these aspects that embraced the community around it. My children and I walk those streets. I ride horses, and I'm a horse rider. We have quads. We walk those streets. They have a certain air that is, if you live there, you have to respect that. As a community, we have to respect each other. And it's ironic to me that through all this process, Trevor, who said he talked to 115 people out there, I don't understand how he could've done that and what the response was. I personally walked the streets after hearing about this less than a month ago, and I talked to 20 different neighbors that I associate with every day, and not one of them was happy about the way that the traffic is gonna be directed through our existing community. And when they directed it the way they do, going out on Brave Lane, which is different than what they originally directed from, and going from Indian Lane, the north properties, going on to Indian Lane, those were not in the original plans. There were no bridle paths. At the last moment, we hear this bridle path thing. I'm sorry, coming from a property owner out there where I walk freely and go here and go there, I know it's private land, but we still have a certain air that we respect. So in closing, I just want you to realize that we live there every day, and none of those issues were addressed. We were not even, in any of our communities, and you will vouch for this, 'cause you're the president, we were told countless times, "No problem, no changes, no changes." Well, I'm sorry, then all of a sudden, we have this approved, tentatively predefined approved plan, which didn't address any of those issues. I cannot ride my horse from where I live to BLM, which is, I can see it, not very far away. None of my children can either. So, dog, do you respect this?
Thank you very much.
We have Tom Woebry, followed by Wes Fletcher.
My name is Tom Hoobry. I've lived on 3125 Indian Lane in Reno for over 23 years. I would like to open with my concerns for our community being kept in the dark and not being able to engage in the early process of the Golden Mesa development. I emailed a timeline yesterday to each of you, and also Trevor Lloyd, showing that we were not offered the actual details of this project until February 1st. I hope that you had time to review it now, or hopefully in the future. I have a petition with over 30 signatures from homeowners in Golden Valley in the area of Indian Lane, Brave, Spearhead, and Rain Dance that I'm hopefully speaking for. None of these people were aware of any of the details of this. The new proposed plans have taken away our access to BLM public land. There was actually a condition staged on Page Six of the staff report, but instead the developer is saying that the BLM can be accessed up Spearhead, which I guess now has changed, which is even questionable, because I heard that that was private property. Are up Estates, which will now have increased traffic into the subdivision, making it extremely unsafe for horses and pedestrians, and unrealistic. I don't feel the Golden Valley homeowners should have to trailer their horses up to BLM land, while some new developing homeowners will have the only direct access to the BLM. That's not quite fair to us. Now for the impact on our existing streets. The plan now for directing traffic into the new subdivision is open on an easement on Indian Lane for the Golden Mesa North subdivision. This will create excess traffic into our valley community, which is unnecessary. There is two required entrances into the subdivision off Estates, which is all that should be necessary. For Golden Mesa South, the only access for these home, new homes, is now planned on Indian Lane and Brave, directing all the new home traffic for the Golden Mesa South subdivision traffic into our valley. This is disturbing and totally unacceptable. I have not been able to find any traffic report that addresses the impact that this will have on our local community, since it appears that the developer does not wanna provide their own access into the Golden Mesa South, but instead chooses... should not be allowed to develop Golden Mesa South all, at all, until they provide their own access without disturbing our existing community. In conclusion, Washoe County Planning Department laid out guidelines throughout the staff report for the developer to follow to keep Golden Valley what Golden Valley has always been. But it was justified to disregard these guidelines because it did not employ the common open space standard. Because of this valley community has lost all reasonable and safe access to BLM, disregarding these conditions of open access opposes an excessive amount of traffic onto our community streets, showing total disregard for the Golden Valley community character as described in the North Valley's Vision and Character Statement. This tentative map and recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission all appears to be established without any knowledge or communication with the Golden Valley community homeowners. This property changed ownership in March of 2014, and since then, many inquiries about this property by the Golden Valley homeowners with no answers available, even from our Golden Valley Property Owners Association until February 1st of this year, when in fact, the whole time this planning was taken behind the community's backs. Please do not approve this map tonight until some of these issues can be presented to the developer and try to come to some compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I do need to remind you that we have decorum in our chambers, and I just, I know that you support the presentations that are made, but we need to withhold handclapping and such to acknowledge that. Am I correct, counsel?
Yes and no. So the applause is fine, as long as it doesn't disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. So that's what you led off with, and I think that's what you were referencing. So there is no prohibition against applause in the old days, and by that I mean probably several years ago. There was a time when some of the boards would prohibit clapping, but that's no longer the case as far as this commission goes, and it is allowed as long as it's not disrupting the meeting.
Okay, so if everybody would please take note of that, thank you.
Hi, I'm Wes Fletcher. I live at 7225 Remington Road in Golden Valley for the last 30 years. When I actually moved there, there was dirt roads there, even at that time. I have a couple concerns. I'm all for growth, by the way. I've made my living as a roofing contractor as well, and I get it. That's private property, the people could put a fence up and none would have any use to it if they really wanted to, I'm sure. But we have appreciated the use of that property all these years and riding our horses and walking through there. But we have, I have a couple concerns concerning the future. One is that how long will it be before Golden Valley is annexed into the city? At that point, will we be having to hook up to city sewer? At what expense? Will we have to condemn our wells and fill them in at a great expense? There's a lot of expenses involved in those things. Are the, I assume that as one lot that that property is now, it's not divided, it's one lot, I'm assuming it pays the $22 a month for the recharge that we all pay. And will they continue to pay now 115 times that 22 for the recharge wells that we have in our community? Many of our properties that are there now that are vacant, they're still paying that fee. So you can argue, well gee, they're not going to be using the water. Well, neither are these vacant lots. They're not using that water either, but they're still being charged for that fee, and it could be more by now. The other concerns I have, of course, are the, this runoff condition, where we've, of course, experienced quite a bit of that in my area, where the water's running over the word, the road, because of the covert sizes and things of that nature. I'm wondering if those things are going to be addressed, and that will, I understand what you're saying about these retention ponds, but they fill up and that water runs on, I get that. But it's got to go somewhere, and it comes right across the road into my house right now. I've at several times had to put sandbags in front of my garage as well. Well, twice, I'll take that back. Those are some of the concerns I have, and I'm hoping that they will be addressed and that, I assume the city will be taking care of, well, they're not coverts, I guess, all their, yes, it's all county now, but this is going to be a city development, right? City property? No, this will still be in county? Okay, so county still will be responsible for my ditches and those ditches and all those ditches coming up? And will they indeed, hopefully, do a little better job? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ray Lake, followed by Susan Terry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Ray Lake. I live at 620 Colt Drive in Golden Valley. And in disclosure, I have to say I'm the chairman of the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board. I also sit on the City of Reno Ward Ford Neighborhood Advisory Board and the Golden Valley Property Owners Association. And also in disclosure, we heard this development at the cab meeting last, this month, I guess it was. And so I just want to say that tonight I am speaking for myself. I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of my position, and I want to talk about traffic. The, about 18 months ago, the property owners sent me and Lori Rockrieges down to Carson City to talk to the Department of Transportation about the condition of 395, which has not improved in the last 18 months. Right now, it reaches a service level of F in the morning, and I think actually there are some spots where it reaches F in the evening commute. Right now, also, the City of Reno has something on the order of 17,000 dwelling units proposed in the North Valleys that will add to that. The Stonegate Development alone will add 4,100 units. They expect to break ground in 2018. And while we are getting some relief from the Department of Transportation, their studies are going to take a minimum of three years, and we can't expect any reasonable relief until probably 2022 or beyond. There are some improvements that are in the works that will maybe help us a little bit in the short term, and that is if we get them. I've seen the items that are proposed, and generally, they're all the things that we would like to see, but they're not guaranteed and they're much too far out to help us very much right now. So in conclusion, I think you should just bear in mind the traffic situation on 395, and this will add 100-plus trips per day in the morning, and the same in the evening, and 80% of that will go on to 395, which already is way overloaded. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan Terry, followed by Roger Edwards.
My name is Susan Terry. My address is 3305 Indian Lane, but my house faces Arrowhead Way. And I have lived in Golden Valley for 44 years and plan on dying in my home. So this is a big punch in the gut for me, but I am grateful because I know originally these lots were supposed to have three houses per acre, and now they're down to, or they've increased to almost an acre, because you guys are surrounding all my neighbors and I, and those lots are five to two and a half acres. They're not one acre right there. So I'm grateful for the one-acre lots. But I'm very, very concerned because the reason we live out there is mostly for our animals. And I'm concerned that you're building city houses, and those people are going to complain about my rooster crowing at 2:30 in the morning, and 5 o'clock, and 1:30 in the morning, and all the goats, and the llamas, and everything else we have out there. So somehow, that needs to be addressed, because I've been there 44 years with animals. One other thing that just hit me in the eyes was your equestrian trail goes down my private road. That is the access road for all the people that live on Arrowhead Way. All the people living on Arrowhead Way access their houses down Arrowhead Way. That's our road. It's not an equestrian trail. They need to build an equestrian trail somewhere else, so it's not on our road, because we're driving that road every day in order to get to our homes. And we were not sent notices, and this thing totally surrounds us. It actually butts up to my neighbor at the end of the road, to his house, and I don't think he got a notice either. And besides all our domesticated animals, they have to understand too, they're moving into coyote territory. And I'm, and I believe that the coyotes belong there. They were there first, and they're part of the ecosystem. And they keep our population and our ground squirrels and our mice, they keep those populations under control, and if you kill them all, they multiply even faster. So they need to be aware of that. If they have little critters, bring them in the house at night. So all these things need to be told to the new people that might be moving in there. But the equestrian trail is, and it's a private road, belongs to us, so you need to talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, welcome back.
Hi there, Roger Edwards, 3405 War paint circle. 23 years, 20 years on the Homeowners Association, eight years on this commission, and we have fought with, through three prior plans for this piece of property, these two pieces. And this is by far the best thing that's ever happened to that piece of property. I've sat through hundreds of plans and talked about all the things we talked about tonight, and all those things need to be resolved, but, and you guys have said this, but the folks in the audience ignore the fact that this is a tentative plan. Don't know about it, don't want to address it, whatever it is. But this is the best thing that's happened to Golden Valley in 20 years. And there's going to be a few problems with equestrian trails and so forth, but if we had three detention ponds on that property now, like this plan has got planned for, we wouldn't be having the flooding we have now in the Marlin Ditch. So I'm 100% in favor of this plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Carlos Archuleta, followed by Dylan Etchegary.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Carlos Archuleta. I live at 7095 Estates Road. Nobody has come by and talked to me about the effects of this plan. The traffic on Estates, I will never be able to get out there during peak times, and during the air races, forget it. School time becomes a dangerous time. Now, if you've got animals, horses, or just walking with your dog, I dare you to come out on Estates Road today, let alone when this development's done. And retention pond, I can buy that, except for one thing. Who's going to take care of all the mosquitoes? In the desert, we have mosquitoes when you have holding water. That's about the only thing that I, I've only had a few minutes to go over them plans, and I'm sure there's more, but there's one item that I'm really confused about. The flood, the changes of the flood zone? I got a letter from FEMA, says I am not in the flood zone. Well, this clearly puts me in the flood zone, and the cost of that insurance, because of what's going on around us, is quite a lot. And I put to you, how many people are going to be changed in that flood zone? One guy? Well, yeah, big deal. It don't matter, do you? But if it was you, it would matter. So I urge you to take into account what it's doing to the guys that face Estates Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dylan Etchegary, followed by Neil Cobb.
Evening Commissioners, my name's Dylan Etchegary. My wife and I bought our house in Golden Valley on 3170 Indian Lane two years ago. I wish I could say I've lived there for 40 years, but quite frankly, I'm not 40 years old either, so. I don't want to sound like a broken record tonight, but I'm going to, because my wife and I have horses, our horses are our lives. You know, everybody has a hobby, our hobby's horses. I grew up with horses my entire life. That's all I know. I know that's a private property, these two pieces of land, but what happens when, say that we can't go onto this private property? All we have is to either ride at the arena or go up some other designated horse path. How are we going to get to the arena with, you know, the traffic's already horrendous, you add another 115 houses, that's going to bring in bare minimum 115 cars on those roads. We're not going to be able to access the arena on the other side of Estates, you know, coming from Indian, or on the east side of Estates Road. So if any of you guys have ever had horses in your entire lives, you know that they don't respond well to traffic. They don't like the cars, it's a danger to us, that's what we do out there, we have horses, we ride. All these people who are coming in, they're not going to have horse sense. Everybody that lives out there, they're nice with us when we're walking our horses or riding our horses, they stop. They slow down. I tend on, my wife and I tend on living in this house for the rest of our lives, you know. We didn't buy, we spent all our whole life savings to buy our house. We don't want to come in here and have to sell because people don't want to become accustomed to our lifestyle out there. So I hope you guys can take that into consideration, that it is going to affect us. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Neil Cobb, followed by Bill Rosa.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and fellow Commissioners. My name's Neil Cobb, I reside at 7660 Hillview, right on the corner of Estates and Hillview. I'm going to have traffic coming right out of the upper road, right lining up with my house, and then down below, we've got more traffic feeding off. Trevor mentioned we had six different ways to get out of there. Well, both of them that get onto Indian, 80% of that is going to come over to Estates also. It is a major problem at the intersection of Golden Valley Road and Estates. If the commute traffic is going on at 7:30 in the morning, and the kids are coming to school, the buses are lined up, the same thing at 2:30 in the afternoon, you cannot get on Golden Valley Road. I normally take Indian up to Spearhead, and then I can get on the good end of the traffic signal that's slowing everybody down for the school. That's one problem. We do need a control of some type or another. Either a roundabout, a four-way stop, or a stoplight at that intersection. We need to make sure on the sewer. Now, I've already talked to Trevor, and I think that you've handled that, and I'm very appreciative of that. I have two points that I'd like to comment on that are positive. Now, when I was the president of the Homeowners Association there, we had all kinds of people trying to develop. One of the proudest moments- One of the proudest moments I've ever had in my life is to be called a dirty little SOB by the representatives from linear homes that wanted to jam 600 houses down our throat. So I am very grateful that the county is still keeping this as one acre. That's part of the character of this area. The other thing I'm happy about is that there's single lots. Instead of a single developer, we're going and having all of the roofs look the same color, same composite or tile or whatever they're going to use. They are going to be individual houses built by other people that purchase these individual lots. They're supposed to have CCNRs and the rest of that. But I have preached, ever since I've been out in Golden Valley, and I think we're in our twentieth or twenty-first year, if you're going to bring a project of any kind out there and be our neighbors, when you're going to go right up the middle and effectively cut the community in half, you should bring something that is compatible and complementary to the area. We are neighbors. There was reference to the equestrian path. We have a very unique park. We have areas to work your horses. The whole works is down there. And how are they going to get over to anything for the BLM so that they can ride in open space? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bill Rosa, followed by Scott Bauer.
My name's Bill Rosa. I live at 7615 Estates Road. And one of the reasons that I, my, one of the understandings that I had when I first moved out there, the reason this property couldn't be developed any further, was because of the water quality. With people, if they kept, continued to build more homes, more animals, it's going to affect our wells. We're already, part of the regeneration project is purification or to bring our water quality up. And I, I don't see anything in your study about what the impact of another 120 homes with their animals are going to do out there. That, and how it ever got past that, I mean, you'd be better off putting a subdivision in there and not letting people have animals than, than to do this. You talk about a pumping station, that it's not going to be any inconvenience to anybody. The existing pumping station that's on Marlin, they got pump trucks sitting there. They're working on that thing all the time. It's a mess. I wouldn't want it across the street from my house. If you're going to take and put retainment ponds, put them in the middle of your neighborhood. Don't, don't put them across the street from my house or these other people's homes. Put them in the middle of your neighborhood. Think about the people that live there. We talk about retaining walls and deepening ditches. That ditch along there on Estates Road, that's where the majority of people ride their horses is along that, along that ditch. That's the access up to the BLM. And then you take a look at the traffic, and you think it's only going to be affected to going down Estates to Golden Valley Drive. You wouldn't believe the traffic that goes up and down Estates Road, since they put in the high school, for people going both ways through the desert into Lemon Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things too is, I don't see anything about modular homes. They've taken and put in modular homes in, in, on some of the lots in Golden Valley. And is, is there anything in there about their CCNRs not being able to put any modular homes in?
Thank you. Scott Bauer, followed by Merrill Etchegary.
Yeah, my name's Scott Bauer. I live at 7850 Tamra Drive. I bought my house up there a year ago because it was a nice, quiet area. But Estates Drive, right now as it is, is pretty busy, busy street. You have people walking their dogs, riding their horses, and you add another hundred and some houses up there, trying to get around, pass someone with a horse or a dog can be a pretty, pretty rough situation. That, that road is so narrow right now that when I'm driving my dooley, I get kind of, kind of nervous when another dooley's coming down the street because, you know, it's so tight, about half clipped fenders. And then the ditch is so deep off the side, it doesn't give you any room to move over. So when I was looking at the map that they were showing, I think one access to an eastern street, they talked about being for, you know, half a dozen lots. Looking at that map, all other accesses are all going to be dumping onto Estates during school hours. Trying to get from Golden Valley onto Estates is a nightmare. And trying to get from Estates onto Golden Valley is a nightmare as well. So traffic there is, is difficult right now. You add in 115 homes, that's, you know, a mom, a dad, a kid or two driving a car, that's easily 300 cars that you're going to add into traffic going up and down Estates Drive. In, in terms of the getting your horses from the BLM land down to the arena, yeah, there, there definitely should be accommodations made to be able to go through on, not using other people's private property, but to have, you know, designated paths that's within their subdivision to allow for, for horse traffic back and forth through there, I think would be very valuable, very important. Granted, I haven't had a, had the opportunity to get a horse yet, but that's, that's the reason I bought that property out there, so I can live that lifestyle and enjoy that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Merrill Etchegary.
Hi, my name's Merrill Etchegary. I live at 3170 Indian Lane. I've been there for two years, but I've been riding out there probably more about six years. And so it's been a dream come true, buying a house out there. And we live directly, we're, we're three houses down from Estates, and I choose to ride through the BLM land to the public arena. Like somebody else touched on, this new housing development is essentially splitting our valley in half. And it's, I don't feel that it's going to be safe anymore to both the drivers and people on horseback. We're not, no longer going to be able to get down to our community arena safely. And that was something that, at one point, our community felt strongly about and put in that arena and that park for the citizens to access. And we're no longer going to have access to that safely. Like I said, both for drivers and for people riding their horses. And there's many access points to the BLM lands now that we have, but just the one, I see that being a huge problem as well. That's really my big thing. I agree with everything everybody else has said, traffic overcrowding schools, water, this development not fitting in with the characteristic of our valley. All of those are good. So I don't know if I have anything else to add. Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter that hasn't filled out a comment card? Okay, if not, I'm, okay, sir? You'll come forward and fill out a comment card, and, well, you can state your name and give your public comment, and then fill out the comment card.
Yes, I'm Dan Arias. I live at 7575 Tamra. Been there since 1978. I see in, in reviewing some of the, the, the plan that the Health Department has made comment on to not allow vector from, come from those properties that are going to be leveled. I just want to be the one to tell you, I worked on the first fatality out there in Golden Valley in 1980. Twelve-year-old child died when it got bubonic plague from a dog that was playing across the road, over where the tentative map is showing that they're going to do these residences. I, like Roger, think that this is the best thing that's happened as far as the plans that I've seen in previous times and belonging to the homeowners association. But I am also a realist in realizing that times are tough for, like the Health Department vector control, and in fact, it's only a part of what it used to be. I would, I would urge this commission to make sure that those animals that are displaced do not come off there and go into other places, first. Secondly, I would say in the retention ponds, there's plenty of retention ponds about Washoe County. I know. I worked in the vector control for over thirty years here. I was the one that started those programs. I also sit on two national boards. One, the Zika virus council for the United States, and I'm the guy that went to Washington to start the West Nile virus task force in the U.S. Two things that can happen from retention ponds is if they aren't taken care of. That's normally where your West Nile virus is going to come out, if you have tulies. You get Culex aretha thorax or Culex pippian mosquitoes. And now we're going to have mosquitoes in those areas where we don't typically see them. You have horses in abundance there. Sometimes they're not vaccinated, sometimes they are. So those are a couple of issues that I, I would strongly suggest this commission to address, or at least find out from the Health Department what's going to happen. I understand they've had large budget cuts. It's not the vector that it used to be. But you have to be mindful, if you're going to do something like this, you want to make sure that you at least protect the people that are there. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one additional, Jennifer, and I believe it's Boal.
We live at 7545 Vista View Drive. We are one street from Estates. Estates is very busy to, there's so many high school kids. It's not safe for the high school kids to walk down, and now you're going to add more traffic, like Neil Cobb. If I go to work and I have to go to Spanish Springs, I will not make the left from Estates to Golden Valley because you can't. I go down Indian to Spearhead to make my left, where there's less traffic. It is very dangerous for the children to be walking, and nobody stops at the crosswalk. To the point where I don't let my sixteen-year-old cross the crosswalk because buses, sheriffs, parents, nobody stops for the children. So please take that into consideration. A stop sign, a stoplight, a roundabout, there has to be safety for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? No further public comment. All right, appears to be one more. And then you'll fill out a comment card.
Hi, I'm Diane Garland, and I live at 7565 Estates Road. And I've been there for ten years. I'm, I have horses. I have a barn that faces out onto Estates Road. The increased traffic on Estates Road is going to make it, as other people have said, unsafe for me to get from my house up into the BLM, even on Estates Road. The traffic now, people go in excess, sometimes at fifty miles an hour on that road. But the traffic isn't that heavy now, so we can see the cars coming. But if there is a flow of traffic to walk on Estates Road, especially like Jennifer said, with the high school kids, the section of Estates Road that is east, I guess, no, that is towards the high school from Indian, is very dangerous to walk on, even now, to access any, anything downstream. So if you can't walk, imagine trying to get across Estates Road and on that even a block with a horse, there's nowhere to go off the road. The line on the side of the road is about this far from the ditch, and you can't ride your horse in the ditch or through the ditch. A lot of those ditches have rocks in them. But people drive really fast, and with those other cars coming onto Estates Road from the other side, if those people don't have horses, and we don't really know whether they're going to be horse people or not, but with the curbs and gutters, it's going to be less likely that those people will be the type of people that we are, that where we like to have horses and we want to ride. The other people that said they come off of Indian and they go around onto a short distance onto that, the new development, which is now going to be a pond behind those homes, and we can, and they can get across to the riding arena easily and safely. But if they have to come across on Indian, it, it's a nightmare. I don't even walk to, when I run, I don't, I don't even go that way because I can't get that one block without encountering traffic or walking physically in the road. So if there could be a access on Estates, a wide, maybe a wide dirt track where people could walk and people could ride their horses up the road, it would be a significant improvement over what I've seen on the, like similar to a bridle path of what I've seen on the current, current. And there was one more thing I wanted to say, but I think I'm going to run out of time. My property has four properties in front of my property. I have two driveways coming straight down into my property, and that's a little disturbing because I have roads on three sides of my property already. So that's kind of one personal thing for me, but it doesn't really affect anyone else.
Okay, thank you very much.
No further comment.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the board. Oh, we need a break, okay. A five-minute break. Thank you. Back into session. And I, we have closed public comment and we're bringing it back to the board for further questions, clarifications, conversations. Okay.
So what do you think?
What is...
Who gets to start?
Mr. Horen, we'll start with you and we'll go down the line.
Now I'm on.
There, yeah, we can hear you much better now.
Yeah, regurgitatively so, I suppose. Flood zones, Trevor, did we change flood zones for anybody?
Change what?
Flood zones, FEMA flood zone. We're changing the flood zone, so did somebody who wasn't in the flood zone now in the flood zone?
That's my question. And maybe I'm not the best person to answer that question. My understanding is that there was an application request for a conditional letter of map amendment or revision, and that is going through the process as right now through Washoe County. And what ultimately will happen is those floods, that flood zone, and I believe it's only for...
Or flood plain, I'm sorry.
I believe it's just within the flood, within that subject property. I don't believe it's changing any flood maps, but maybe we'll have somebody here that can clarify.
Somebody wants to answer it.
Yeah. Hello, my name is David Westhoff. I'm with Dew Hydrology, and when we prepared the revised flood plain map, we did not add any additional lots into the flood plain. And it may be just a graphical error or something, but I'll definitely check on it and make sure that it's corrected.
Okay, I love simple answers. Water quality, does this, we got any questions about, there was a question raised about water quality. Do we have water quality people who can address that question, Trevor?
I was hoping I would still see Mr. Enlow here. Apparently he has left. Tamwa is now the purveyor of water, and they, clearly they do tests all the time to make sure that the quality of the water is...
So that's covered?
That's covered.
Okay. Next one is equestrian trail, is that on a private street?
That was my question, thank you.
I wanted to get in first here, so I appear smart.
No, I don't need to talk.
Well, that's why we started with you.
What we see is along both Spearhead and Arrow Creek, those are private, those are private, I'm sorry, those are public access easements. What we have requested is that the applicant provide an equestrian trail. It may or may not be included inside of that easement, but it would be on the applicant's property, and we will ensure that there's adequate access, adequate width for roadway. We're not going to take away roadway access in any regard.
And the easement would be on the applicant's property, not on any other property?
That is correct.
Okay. The other question then would be, now it'll be done, is on streets, are all the streets that we're talking about code now, or will they be code as far as width and all that other stuff?
They will have to be code in order for Washoe County to accept dedication of any of those roads. Per my understanding, all of those roads are going to have to meet Washoe County's minimum standards for road width and design standards.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Commissioner Chesney.
Trevor, on the equestrian trail, that's going to allow these folks who currently are under the impression they're not going to have unfettered access to the BLM land to have access through that property to the BLM land?
Yeah, this is a concession that the applicant is willing to make. We did have this discussion before that condition was imposed. And yes, there will be access that goes directly from the south to the BLM property to the north, yes.
Traffic, and I guess this would be for Dwayne, Mr. Smith? If, are there any plans, are there any plans in the future to alleviate any of the traffic congestion, or has the traffic study pretty well satisfied your organization's requirements for adequate flow?
For the record, Dwayne Smith, Washoe County Community Services Department. The traffic study that was performed for the projects, project identifies those impacts. It does not raise the level of services to the point at which warrants are met for signalized or other intersection considerations on Golden Valley.
Great, thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Doncheck.
Well, Commissioner Horn asked a few of my primary questions, but I'm going back to traffic. There's a lot, like I said, a lot of concern on Estates. Estates is currently at thirty-five. In the future, would there possibly be an option to lowering the speed limit on there to slow down the volume on that road? Number, that's number one question. I think that might be Dwayne's.
Again, for the record, Dwayne Smith, Community Services Department. You know, certainly those are things that my department looks at, and if the conditions meet some requirements, that we would consider doing that. But you also have to remember that speed limits are established to help maintain the flow of traffic as well. So there are those trade-offs. We wouldn't go into this immediately saying we're going to change the speed limit. It would be done through work, both pre and post-conditions, and it would have to be justified before we would make any of those changes.
I have another question regarding the traffic report and study that was in there, and I'm not exactly sure of the terminology, but going south on Estates and assuming that everybody wants to make a left turn, they were creating some kind of a lane, special lane in there? And I'm curious where that's going to be because during peak times, that inside lane in front of the high school is the main lane to go through, and the secondary lane is where everybody's going into the school. Where is this second, this left turn that you're discussing going to be? And how are you going to do that when the road isn't wide enough to do anything more now?
I'm looking at Trevor to see if he had a map. We're also at Lauren, who actually looks like he has the map, so maybe we can bring that up so we can step you through that.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can turn on the overhead, but as you're, if you can't do that, that's okay.
She looks like she's...
Kathy's working on it.
The turn lane that you're referencing, that additional lane, Commissioner?
Just, that's okay.
Sorry, we know each other. That was a proposed but not necessary or accepted condition by staff, so that is not part of the project.
So just a clarification, at this point, there is no plan to make any changes to Golden Valley, the flow, with that added traffic because it doesn't warrant it?
That is correct.
Thank you. What would it take to, for that to have to make a change as to regards to concerns for safety?
Again, through the chair, vice chair, I think that the response to that, Commissioner, would be that we would have to experience the post-condition after it's constructed, do additional traffic studies for the actual conditions, and see how those might change or impact the residents. I know traffic is always one of those things that, it's very difficult to accept the fact that there is going to be traffic increases, but there is also a lot of work that goes into understanding that. Through time, if those conditions warrant changes, we will make those adjustments.
Okay, so this is the picture that I was seeing, okay?
Right. That was the proposed but not, it does not meet warrants and it was not included as a condition.
Commissioner Horen.
Well, just a comment on traffic. Traffic has really been a bugaboo or a burden to this commission.
Traffic in schools and water.
Yeah, and how NDOT looks at it, how the NRS looks at it, and how it's justified. And there is, as our colleague has just said, there is no easy answer to that. And it's not that we, as a commission, are not concerned with it. We are concerned with it, but we are limited in what we can actually do about it. And I think that that, anyway, that's what I feel about it, it's just unfortunate. There are some things that we cannot impact as much as we would like to.
I just want to address one other comment that came up because there is an answer in the staff report, and it was brought to Ford at the North Valley Citizen Advisory Board, the concern over our code, which allows homeowners to have animals. And in the staff report, they clearly state staff has included a condition requiring that future homeowners sign a disclosure statement regarding the existence of livestock and the potential for accompanying noise and odor within the immediate area. So that was one thing I commend them after the North Valley Citizen Advisory Board of making that extra condition in there. Thank you.
Other questions? My turn. Dwayne, I guess this is for you as well. This project will be on Tamwa with public water, that comes in public water and public sewer. So there will be no wells, there will be no septic on any of these houses, these proposed homes.
Again, for the record, and to the vice chair, that is correct. Tamwa will be the water service provider for municipal water, and Washoe County and the city of Reno will be the sewer purveyors for municipal sewer.
So these homes do not have to contribute to that recharge for the wells in Golden Valley? Is that correct?
The recharge program was set up for those that utilize domestic wells within the hydro, this small portion of the hydro basin. And because these homes are on municipal water and on municipal sewer, there's no impact or benefit, so no, they will not be part of the recharge program.
Okay. And I think that's it for that. And then when we get to future motions and stuff, as the condition that Commissioner Doncheck just read in terms of homeowners being put on notice, I would like consideration of an additional condition that the CCNRs include that the homes comply with the Golden Valley Neighborhood Area Plan.
That can be accommodated. In fact, I would recommend that we amend the new condition, I believe it's 1R, to include a provision requiring the CCNRs address each of those provisions.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? No, I just, you were having a discussion about the, with regards to the CCNR, I mean, county code and, okay.
We're good.
Thank you. We're good, okay. I will entertain a motion.
Ma'am Chair, before any motions made, I really would like to comment on the fact that the commission, I know, I hope I can be speaking for the other commissioners, that we really do appreciate people coming and expressing their thoughts. We can't always satisfy everybody's questions or concerns, but we really do appreciate people taking the time to express those concerns and thoughts. It's not that they fall on deaf ears.
Thank you, Commissioner Horen. I would also echo that. We are all residents of unincorporated Washoe County, and we take our job here as planning commissioners very serious. And as staff can attest, we are always asking staff what the community is speaking to. And as you know, this is a beginning step, and it is a tentative map before us this evening. And we will always do our due diligence to represent you, and two of us are North Valley's residents, so we know how, we know this.
And I just want to go on with that, that we try to listen and learn from everything, but we are mandated by the codes that are provided us. We have to follow county codes and the rules and facts that we are governed under. We can't, I'm sorry, go with what our feelings are, we have to go with the facts that are provided. And so that's how we function here.
And I'd just remind fellow commissioners that prior to motion, we have two items. It's the, a motion for the tentative subdivision map as well as the lift station.
And we have some addition to...
Addition to the conditions of, Trevor, if you could point that to...
The addition to condition 1R, that's the top condition, to include language that those policies NV five-point-one through NV five-point-eight of the North Valley's Area Plan are also included within the CCNRs. with, within the CCNRs.
CCNRs, yes.
And we were also going to include the notification of, to the schools?
Uh huh.
Did they have, do we have a, do you have a standard wording that they have used in the past that we could piggyback on, Trevor?
Yes, I, I do. I don't have it with me, but we do have that same language, requiring a disclosure statement from all new homeowners that, that their children are subject to be bused to a...
Elsewhere.
To a, a different school, yes.
You're good at this.
You wrote this.
You ask, you asking for a motion?
Yes, I am.
I'll give it a shot.
This is a motion for WTM 16-002. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved tentative subdivision maps, map case number WTM 16-002 for Golden Mesa North. The conditions of approval included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all ten findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110 608-25 with the...
Inclusion of the new language.
The inclusion of the additional condition, 1R, I think it is?
Correct. It's very small. And 2VV.
2VV, there's two of them. Huh?
2VV.
Oh, and, and 2VV, okay.
As well as the disclosure statement.
Disclosure statement for schools.
Okay. All right. Wait, have we got to vote on these separately, or?
You can do them both together.
Okay.
Just add on to the rest of it.
Okay, in addition, motion for WSUP 16-0002. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved the conditions, condition special use permit, case number WSUP 16-0002 for Golden Mesa Sewer Lift Station, having made all of the, the five findings in accordance with Washoe County Development Code Section 110, dot, dot 810, dot 30.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I think that based on all the discussion we've had here, I think that there have been a number of concerns that have been addressed. I, you know, I still had the concern about the, the flood and the water runoff. I, I believe that while there, I guess there's never any 100% guarantee about everything, but I believe that the conditions that have been put forth address these issues in a satisfactory manner. And, and I think that as far as the, the character, you know, this, this property's been zoned for this type of thing for a number of years.
Fifty years.
And I think that, you know, it meets all the codes and so forth of the county, and based on those, those discussions, I will certainly support the motion.
Any other discussion before I call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can you state the vote breakdown? I believe it was unanimous, but just for the record.
It, it was a unanimous vote, yes.
Do what?
Okay, so Mr. Lloyd, are we going to take our agenda out of order, or are we just moving forward?
That is entirely up to this Commission. In fact, the, probably the Acting Chair should...
Okay.
Acting Chair can make that decision.
Here, here, so here's some input on that, Madam Chair. 9B is the master plan regulatory zone. Items, those are items that are time-sensitive under code and state statute. 9C is development code amendment. That one's, I understand that the applicant wants it to move forward, and hopefully we'll get them all done tonight. But 9B is the one that you really need to get done next.
So we should just continue in order?
Yes.
Okay.
The meeting is not supposed to go past 11:00 PM. That's per the Planning Commission rules, so as best we...
I certainly hope we won't go past that.
Right, as best we can. We need to move it on to that item.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just go in order. Next item is item 9B, master plan amendment, case number WP, excuse me, WMPA 17-0002, and regulatory zone amendment case WRZA 17-0001, Lemon Valley Properties. Hearing a discussion and possible action to approve, oops, an amendment to the North Valley's area plan, master plan map that reconfigures the location of rural R and suburban residential SR master plan categories on six parcels to conform more closely to the topography of the area. If approved, the amendment would change plus or minus 25.3 acres of the property currently designated rural to suburban residential, and would change plus or minus 25.3 acres of the property currently designated suburban residential to rural. The overall amount of acreage on the property of acreage designated rural will remain the same at plus or minus 139.816 acres, and the amount of acreage designated suburban residential will also remain the same at plus or minus 68.797 acres. And, number two, the amendment to the North Valley's regulatory zone map that reconfigures the location of general rural, GR, one dwelling per 40 acres, and medium density suburban, MDS, three dwellings per acre, regulatory zones on six parcels to conform more closely to the topography of the area. If approved, the amendment would change plus or minus 25.3 acres of the property currently zoned general rural to MDS, and would change plus or minus 25.3 acres of the property currently zoned MDS to general rural. However, the overall amount of acreage of the property zone general rural will remain the same at plus or minus 139.816 acres, and the amount of acreage zoned medium density suburban will also remain the same at plus or minus 68.797 acres. And we have Roger here to report this, and our audience has diminished exponentially. So thank you, Mr. Pelham.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Can you call for disclosures, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, disclosures.
Yes, I, I was contacted by someone from Manheart if I wanted to have a discussion, and I said no, I wasn't interested at the time, I had everything. And then also, for the record, I was at the North Valley Citizen Advisory Board when this was discussed.
And I was not contacted at all, so, okay. Thank you, Mr. Edwards, for that. Okay.
I will say also, this is one of those items that Commissioner Haran had asked a question about earlier, about quorum. You have a quorum to act, you are a commission of five at this point. It's my opinion that you need four votes to pass the master plan amendment, to recommend it for approval, because it has to be by two-thirds, according to the code and the statutes. And since the Chair left for that trip to Vegas, and one resignation and one other vacancy, you need all four of the votes here tonight in order for that portion to pass.
Our Commissioners clear on that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Good evening, Madam Chair. With your permission, I'm going to try to make this a very quick presentation. I'm going to probably skip through a couple of the slides, but in the interest of time.
I appreciate that, but please don't skip over important and relevant details. We are here for the evening, and we are yours until 11:00.
Absolutely. You read the, the description of these two cases, and that is a very accurate, very detailed description. But in very simple terms, what we are doing is moving density from slopes that are greater than 30% to slopes that are less than 15%. In broad terms, we are doing this in order to implement the policies of the North Valley's area plan. This is located in the Lemon Valley area, and when this was heard at the North Valley's Citizen Advisory Board, there were a number of concerns expressed, primarily having to do with the high water level that exists out there now. In fact, I got a call the very next day saying, how can you, you know, recommend this when this area is under so much water? I went out there, the area in question was not underwater. This is sort of up on the slope of the hillside, again, on sort of the, the east side of the valley there. This is the topography of the area. Those areas with the red are slopes greater than 30%. The yellow and green areas are where we would prefer to have development take place, particularly again in terms of that North Valley's area plan. And in fact, that is what we're doing. The existing master plan and zoning is on the left, the proposed is on the right, and primarily in the bottom center of each of those maps, you see an entire parcel that is zoned medium density suburban, and again with the suburban master plan, and that is essentially moving. That includes slopes greater than 30%, and that is moving essentially north to areas that are nice and flat. The regulatory zone and master plan correspond exactly, and that's why those two maps look so similar. This was noticed in accordance with the requirements of the development code. I believe that all of the findings can be met. Most particularly, I'm going to draw attention to consistency with the master plan. In fact, North Valley's policy 0.2.2 really encourages the, the development, again, of the flatter areas, not the steep areas. This does respond to changed conditions in that we have better information now on where exactly those slopes are located. There is no military installation. The, most of the policies of the North Valley's area plan are not applicable to this. Those that are tend to support the approval of both the master plan and then the corresponding regulatory zone amendment. And I'm trying to see if any other of these, no adverse impacts, again, for the regulatory zone amendment finding, I would draw attention to that one in terms of if the density is moved from the steep to the flatter areas, that allows development to take place with less impact to the natural resource, particularly the hillside. And again, is this the desired pattern of growth? Yes, because again, we're moving off the steep and onto the flat. One thing I would emphasize is the amount of density allowed remains exactly the same. We are not approving any new density, any new dwelling units, the same 206, 208, there are two existing dwelling units. The number that's allowed remains exactly the same, both before and then potentially after an approval as requested. And with that, I believe that the findings can be made. I have been very brief, I've been very quick, and certainly I will take time with any specific questions that you might have, and I'm available for those at this time.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Doncheck, Commissioner Haran's letting me start on this side, okay.
No, I just have a question because again, flood concerns out there, and you said it's on a slope. What is the hydrology of that area? And just from my information, if, once they build, where would that water, where would that water go, and how does it, would it impact any of the other, you know, areas around it? Just...
I would address that very much the way that, that we've addressed some of the things with the previous one in that, this is the first step in a very long process. And in fact, in this case, we're even a step further back.
Because it's already been approved.
Just getting the number that might be able to, to be constructed in terms of dwelling is, and again, in that 206 area. When a tentative map comes along later down the road, if and when, the drainage will be addressed, and essentially, code requires that it be the runoff, leaving the site be the same after as it was before.
So just a clarification, because you brought the question up.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Haran?
Why didn't we do this to start out with?
Bad technology.
That's not a very good answer. Be a little bit more expressive. I know you can be.
We, we have better information now than we had when, when these maps were drawn originally.
The hills weren't there, or the flat wasn't there? I mean, the hills were there, the flat was there.
And our knowledge of where exactly those slopes were is better now than it was then, essentially what it comes down to.
So, and then there's absolutely no downside?
Just switching.
I do not believe that, that I was able to identify a significant detriment associated with the, the request that would lead me to a recommendation of denial.
So what was the insignificant, what was the insignificant thing you noticed? You said you did notice a significant thing. What was the insignificant thing you noticed? I'm trying, I'm not, I'm not trying to be ornery, Roger. This is an honest, this is an honest question.
When I received a phone call last week saying, hey, this is under three feet of water, you know, how can you be anticipating this? I went out and, I had done a site inspection previously, but I went out after the major storms. One of the intersections that would be one of the access points, not the only access point, to part of the proposed subdivision, but one of them is, was flooded late last week. Whether it is still flooded today, I don't know. I don't know that it's gone down too much.
It is.
But that was not the only access, nor even the primary access, to what would potentially be a subdivision later on. Again, but only one of three.
And, and would this change, change that? I mean, if we changed it, would the...
No.
We'd still have the flood?
Yes, this, this change in the location of where the density might be located is, is not going to have an impact on that. Again, the number of dwelling units, the potential development remains identical.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chesney?
I have no...
He has no questions.
Pretty much no questions.
Any other questions for staff before we have the applicant presentation? Okay. We'll reserve the right to call you back.
I'm here at your disposal.
Good evening, Chris Baker with Manheart Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. I do have a quick PowerPoint. Like Roger, I'll kind of skip through some stuff. You did a great job of, of kind of covering it. While we wait for that, I, I would like to just point out a couple of things here. Yes, as Roger indicated, we do have a master plan amendment and a regulatory zone change in front of you. I'm going to zip through here. Roger covered, we've got six parcels totaling 208 acres. Currently, we have the allowance of 209 units. There are two units on two 40-acre properties, which we're proposing to leave. So right now, the property, as it sits today, allows for 209 units. Of that, we have single-family or suburban residential and MDS breakdown of a little over 68 acres. And the rural and GR acreage is just under 140 acres. If you note, if the proposed amendment goes through, those acreages actually stay exactly the same. The number of units stay exactly the same. In short, what we're doing is changing a 25-acre piece from MDS to GR, and conversely, from GR to MDS. What I've done is put them side by side. On the left, you have the existing master plan designations and zoning, and on the, on the right, you have proposed. If you note, in the southeast corner is where the 25-acre change is, where you have existing MDS going to proposed GR. The next slide will show a slope map, and if you'll notice, all of that is red. The master plan, the North Valley's area plan, both indicate that slopes over 30% are less likely for development. Honestly, I don't know how this was done this way at the time. I think it's been zoned this way for a number of years. There's an existing subdivision that has stubbed roads into this property, and when we went and looked at this for potential development, we haven't got to the point where we're kicking around site plans or anything. I think over time, we've, we've come to the understanding that the best way in these valleys is to meet with the community, find out their concerns, and have the site plan fit not only the existing residents, but what their future... plan fit not only the existing residents, but what their future goals are and other things. Obviously, we've had some, um, issues in the areas of, as of late, which obviously we will do our best to address if we do propose any development. But again, I want to boil this down. You have twenty-five acres going that is right now not appropriate for development. And with these six properties totaling two hundred and eight acres, we conveniently have property that, for some reason or another, is less than fifteen percent, as you can tell by the slope map, that is not zoned right now for development. I do want to point out one thing, uh, that was brought up in the question and answer period with Roger. The property that, um, the intersection that was flooded and I think is, is still flooded, actually isn't, although it accesses this property, it doesn't access any portion that is in front of you to be changed. That is actually currently zoned MDS, and we're not proposing to change that. So obviously, that will be, uh, a consideration of our site design, but at this point, that property is actually not included in this application request. With that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff or applicants before we open it up for public comment? Okay, open the public hearing now.
Yes, we have Janice Hunt, followed by Danny Klaus.
I live at, um, one seventy-five Judy Way, which is about, uh, half a block from the flooding. I don't know where they look, but the roads are closed for reason. Down by where they are, um, there's a pump completely flooded. Houses in that next area are flooded. That whole area is flooded. So, just want to say. This is probably maybe too, too early in the, um, whole idea of putting things forward, but, you know, we talk about, um, traffic in Lemon Valley, and, and I'm not so sure that this will affect it too much, but I don't understand how come the traffic on three ninety-five isn't, um, uh, looked at in a real way? Because if you ever try to get to work at any time between seven-thirty and ten, well then you leave Lemon Valley from my house forty-five minutes early on a normal fifteen-minute drive. I mean, that's realistic. The impact on schools? What is, you know, what's our little school? And what is the high school? Wasn't that over, overcrowded too? Um, I'm concerned about those things. Whatever happened to the idea of, of build the schools first, then put the people in it instead of, let's do double duty on a school? Now, I don't understand that. This is a rural community. This isn't downtown Reno. Our basin is a closed basin. All the floodwater from the new place you guys are going to put in, in, um, Golden Valley is coming right into ours. We're already being flooded. Like I said, I live a half a block from all that flood. I am one house away from the flooding. Every time it rains, not floods, every time it rains, we have problems with the sewer. We have problems with the storm drains. Every two or three days, there's somebody out on our road trying to take care of, you know, whatever. I have a pile of dirt in front of my house, sand, this high and this wide. You know, how did it get here? Because we live in the desert and sand comes off of those hills. My proposal is they put it where it's supposed to be, where it was zoned for it. Why don't they want to put it there? That's where they, it's supposed to go. They can hook up to our sewer, to our water, and hey, that's, that's good. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny Klaus?
There's a lot of problems out in Lemon Valley right now. I'm a half a, half a house away from my house being totally underwater. This would just add more into the basin. Lemon Valley, Washoe County, does not take care of Lemon Valley. The people take care of Lemon Valley. They don't come out and maintain that lake. They haven't done it forever. I've been there for thirty-eight years. I grew up in the house. That was my mom's first house. She got it for her birthday. I can't drive down Lemon Valley Road right now because it's closed because of the flooding. All the way from Patrician, where they want to build some more on top of that, and they say the water's not going to impact our lake. Well, where it comes around, where they're proposing that they want to build now, that's the inlet to the lake from the Lemon Valley side. What's that going to do? They already had redesigned it for flooding, for big water drainage. It doesn't work. It's underwater right now. You can go out there right now, and where they want to put homes, a- all in that area is underwater. I haven't seen it in a week because I've been sandbagging my house. What happens when this goes through? Why can't they build up on the hill? I'll tell you why. Because it's going to cost them way too much money to build on that hill. That's why they haven't done it in fifty years. They want to make it easy for them. Roger says, oh, the flatlands, it's not flooded. Well, I'll tell you what, that mountain peavine, it hasn't melted yet. There's no solution from the county right now to fix the problem out there. Our highways, like everybody else has said, if you get up at six-thirty in the morning, you might make it to work on time by eight. When it snows out there, our highways, it took me two hours to get to my doctor's appointment. I was a half hour late. You guys want to add more stuff, more houses? And you don't consider the rest of it? We need to fix the problem out there first. Fix our schools, fix our roads, fix the highway, and then start adding stuff. Other than that, it's not going to work. You're going to make a bigger mess. Three ninety-five has been a mess since the nineteen eighties when I went to, when I went to school, from Parr to McCarran. It's always backed up there. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
No further public comment?
Is there anyone else in the audience that wished to make comment? If not, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the board for further questions, clarifications.
I just want on the record that this is not changing a development, that, that the area has already been approved for the homes. All they're doing is changing the location on the property where the homes would be. And with the new mapping, Roger, you're saying that this would be closer to the code versus slopes, is that?
To Commissioner Doncheck through the chair. Yes, this is, in my opinion, implementing the policies of the North Valleys Area Plan by putting planned development on slopes that are less than, that are fifteen percent and less rather than thirty percent and more.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I call for a motion? Are you prepared to make a motion?
Madam Chair. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained at Exhibit A to, to this staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in master plan amendment case number WMPA seventeen dash zero zero two, having made the following five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section one-ten, eight-twenty dot fifteen D, and to further findings required by North Valleys Area Plan Policy NV dot twenty dot three, included as numbers six and seven below. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendments WMPA seventeen dash zero zero two as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board, County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the planning commission.
And then we have?
Can they do them together?
You can do them together. The second one requires the first one to pass, um, so.
Okay, so.
As long as that's part of the motion, you, you're fine doing them together.
The question was if we include the regulatory zone amendment in your motion?
Yes, as part, yeah, that is part, as part of the.
But the RZA requires the, um, MPA to pass before we can consider the RZA, so.
So I, it's fine to do them both together, all right? You just can't pass the zoning and not pass the master plan?
Right.
Right, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I do, I do want to include the regulatory zone amendment, um, recommend, uh, okay, let me read it in. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained at Exhibit B to recommended adoption of regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA seventeen dash zero zero one to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners, having made all the following findings according, findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section one-ten, eight-twenty-one dot fifteen.
I second.
Any discussion?
Can I retell when that's on? Uh, that, that based on the discussion, the fact that we are not, you know, recognize the public comment, you know, those, those factors are still there, uh, we're not changing that, and, and based on that, I can fully support the motion.
And before we, I call for the question, just to remind all of us that we are passing the MPA and then the RZA. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record reflect that it passed unanimously. Okay. I'm looking over at Nate because it looked like he had a comment, but.
I was just going to add for the record that the, the master plan amendment now, um, has to move on to the county commission, and then ultimately, if it's approved there, it has to be found in conformance with the regional plan at the regional planning level. So there's potentially several more hearings that could take place with respect to that.
And some of us will get to be a part of all those hearings.
Yes, you will.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Okay, on to item nine C, Development Code Amendment, case number WDC A one-six dash zero 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 one. Now do, as, I can ask you to read these instead of me doing that.
Thank you for reading the last one.
Oh, you're so welcome. It was the longer one.
Item nine C is a request to amend the Washoe County Code, Chapter one-ten, Table one-ten point three-oh-two point zero-five-point-four, Table of Uses, Industrial Use Types, to allow wholesaling, storage, and distribution heavy in general rural GR regulatory zone with a minimum lot size of forty acres and a special use permit approved by Washoe County Board of Adjustment. Here to present this item is, is Planner Eric Young.
I'm sorry? Okay, um, prior to that, to ask for disclosures from the board?
The applicant is a, a former neighbor of mine. They're, they're no longer neighbors, but, uh, they lived in, they were my neighbor for seven or eight years. I just needed to disclose that.
So is it, are they friends of yours as well, or just former neighbors? You just know who they are?
No, not, not friends. They were just, they were just neighbors and, and they've moved on.
Okay. Do you have any commitments to them about how this is going to turn out or anything like that?
No.
Do you feel that you can be impartial?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young?
Good evening. I'm, I, the little light's not on, is, is, are you hearing me all right?
Yes, you can barely see the little light, but.
Okay, maybe it's on.
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Eric Young from, uh, the Planning and Development Division. As Trevor indicated, this is an amendment to, a proposed amendment to the Washoe County Development Code. One thing that makes it a little different is that most of the development code amendments that you see are initiated through you often, um, or the county commission. It's fairly rare that we get a development code amendment, um, application from the public. This is an application from the public. What the applicant has, has identified is, is a situation in our code whereby, uh, a certain type of business that we're probably all familiar with, uh, what I've identified in the staff report and the, um, uh, the PowerPoint here is, is a, a sort of a, a full scope landscaping business that would have both retail and wholesale, uh, a nursery with, with plants and, and live materials, as well as the, um, more contemporary expanded concept of, of a landscape business that would also have a, a wide variety of, uh, non-nursery products, um, rock, gravel, um, and other types of that for sale, both wholesale and retail. In order to establish such a business in, in Washoe County, uh, you have to, uh, you'll, you'll be identified as, as using two different use types. One use type is nurseries, retail and wholesale, and the other use type, to cover the, the non-living material, to cover the rocks and, and the, the gravels and the other materials like that, um, in our development code has to be identified as wholesaling, storage, and distribution in order to have the, that, those rocks, um, a- a- stored and distributed, both wholesale and retail. The nursery side is considered a commercial land use type. The wholesale, storage, and distribution is considered an industrial land use type. And therefore, when you look in the, in the land use tables, the only way to establish this type of a business is to identify property in the, um, industrial regulatory zone. So, what I've just described here, I'll, I'll put it up there for you. This is our definition of wholesaling, storage, and distribution. We would have to jump down to, uh, heavy, which, uh, where we've got, uh, a, a note there in regard to monument sales, stone yards, and, um, open storage yards. So it, it's the stone yard that has brought us to this particular definition. When somebody comes in and says, this is what we want to do, we go in the code, we look at the different use types, and then we go to the definitions or the descriptions and try and find the best possible thing we can. And so, um, in the applicant's case, what, what's happened is that part of the business he wants is identified as industrials or heavy, heavy wholesaling and storage and distribution, and the other part of his business is just a typical commercial business. But in order to do it, you can only do it in, uh, the industrial regulatory zone. Here, here's how we define, uh, nursery sales. It specifically, uh, talks to plants, flowers, related nursery items, um, and, and actually excludes things like the Xeriscap items that we're starting to see more and more of, and the landscape schemes and landscape designs that actually have less and less live material and more and more of, of the non-living material. So, uh, that's what the applicant described pretty comprehensively in his application materials. And so therefore, the, the, he said, what do we do about this? Is there any change to the code that's possible? There's a variety of ways to, to go about it, changing definitions, expanding definitions, moving something from a, an industrial to a commercial use. There are different ways to approach it, but the way the applicant decided to approach it was to suggest that, uh, the wholesale, storage, and distribution use type should be allowed in the general rural regulatory zone with a special use permit. This is not an unheard of approach. Washoe County has taken this approach with a few other, uh, uses that were confined to, only industrial. I think perhaps we've done it with only commercial as well. And we have suggested that that use may be okay in the general rural regulatory zone with a special use permit. The special use permit doesn't come to this board, it would go to the Board of Adjustment. The special use permit doesn't come to this board, it would go to the Board of Adjustment. I think the most recent time we did this was, which, I'll find it here for you, I think the most recent one we did was high-technology industry, as is identified as an industrial land use type, and we made a zone change to allow that in general rule with a special use permit. So that, this is an approach that we've taken in the past. This is a further discussion of what we've just mentioned. I do want to suggest that, or let you know that the applicant, in their application, what they requested, did not indicate any kind of a standard for lot size. Staff considered this, shopped it around with other staff, we talked about it quite a bit. With a lot of other regulatory zones, you'll find non-conformities, but you don't find them that often. I think this board is probably really, really familiar with the situation in Washoe County whereby the general rural regulatory zone, GR, has been used for a lot of different purposes over time, in a kind of a legacy sense. And you'll find general, just like in what we just saw before, you know, the reason that happens is because we have tried over time to use general rural to indicate especially development constraints like slopes, and so we'll end up with parcels with split zoning. You're probably very familiar with in Spanish Springs, as you start to move east. Out in Spanish Springs, you'll find a lot of non-conforming general rural parcels that are five acres, 10 acres, 20 acres, here and there. So non-conformities in the general rural regulatory zone really proliferate throughout the county. You can find them throughout the county, all different sizes, for all different reasons. And so, staff considered whether we wanted to go forward with a recommendation that would potentially allow a special use permit application on one of these non-conforming parcels, or even a portion of a parcel that's zone general rural, where another portion of the parcel is already, you know, developed in a residential sense. And there are all, those kinds of requests are very problematic for a variety of reasons, as you can imagine. And so, and then finally, the reason that staff felt that we may, it may be important to have a minimum lot size is to prevent staff recommending the proliferation of uses on non-conforming lots. We wanted to come forward with a recommendation that respects the regulatory lot size that is required for most uses. Now, of course, there are issues with that as well. We've got several industrial use types in the general rural regulatory zone with a special use permit that don't have a minimum lot size. That wasn't considered in the past when we did that. I think that one of the reasons we're coming forward with this idea now, that we would ask for it, is because we do have that experience with dealing with this proliferation of general rural, and it's not, I wouldn't call it a nightmare, it's not a disaster, but it's something that staff would like to, like to not promote, the use of general rural parcels for purposes beyond what we're already contemplating on non-conforming lots. So it's not part of the applicant's application, I want to make that clear, this is something that staff added, and I, my best guess is that you'll be hearing about that from staff in a few moments, or from the applicant in a few moments. So the way the proposed change would work is just to, you're familiar with the land use tables, how they look, how they work. It's just gonna take the indication for the requirement for a special use permit and put it in that box under general rural where it talks about wholesaling, storage, and distribution. It's just an amendment to the table. We're not amending definitions, we're not amending anything else. It's just an amendment to the table. That will, that's the textual amendment, that's how, that's how it would work going forward. So, what the rest of this, this presentation is really just some bullet points that staff wanted to bring up in addition to the 40-acre minimum, that are things that we feel should probably be discussed around this issue. So, as I've already mentioned, there are a lot of industrial use types that are already permitted in GR with an SUP. In fact, there are seven. This would raise it to eight. Regional data and analysis suggests there's an increasing demand for land use that can accommodate industrial use types. I think, I don't know if they came and made a presentation to you last year, I know that they were making, the regional planning agency was making their rounds, regional planning staff was making their rounds on an industrial study that was completed by them, talking about the regional need for more industrial space, more industrial land use zoning and master planning. So we know that's occurring, we know that is happening. Washoe County Master Plan doesn't allow industrial regulatory zone in the rural master plan category, where you find general rural most often. So there may be a way to consider that. My staff report looked at whether this is consistent with the master plan. And I believe at this point that it is consistent with the master plan, and it's certainly consistent with past Washoe County practice. But I think it is worth asking, is there some point at which by allowing industrial use types that would typically be held for industrial zoning, if we keep chipping away at this one at a time and adding more and more to general rural, is there a point at which we're not consistent with the master plan anymore? Because we have sort of de facto allowed industrial zoning in the rural master plan area. This would take it up to eight. There are currently 18 industrial use types identified in the industrial table. There's 18. This would allow eight of those to be located in the general rural regulatory zone. So it's not, it's not quite half, but it's getting there. So I don't have an answer to that, I think it's something for you to discuss and to consider. I think it may be something to consider in the future about how we define these things and where we're going with industrial land use. At this point, I don't see it as a barrier to this particular application and this particular amendment, but I think it would be unwise not to keep it in mind and perhaps even propose some future work on our development code to think this industrial use through a little better than we might be doing right now. So we did have all the required workshops, of course, for, I don't know if you remember, for development code amendments, we were required to have what we call an all cab meeting, but we invite everybody, we notice it in the, we held that on the 22nd, and nobody showed up, and we received zero comments from the public for any of our notices or workshops. So the code amendment findings are the, are these four that you see here, consistency with the master plan. I discussed that a little bit just now. I'm stating in this staff report, and it's my belief that we can be consistent with the current master plan with this application. The second code amendment finding is that it promotes the purpose of the development code. Staff certainly feels that it does that, especially with the requirement for a special use permit. Is it a response to change conditions? I think that it clearly is a response to change conditions. Ziriscap might not be new, and the growth of ziriscap concepts and new landscape design concepts might not be particularly new, but it is a change that we didn't respond to in our code, and so I think that there is a change condition here that we need to consider. And there are no adverse effects on the conservation of the population element to this code amendment. So staff would recommend approval of this. We have a recommended motion for you, as always. Staff would make, recommend approval of this application with the addition of the 40-acre minimum lot size. So I'm obviously here for any questions or discussion, and I'm, yeah, the applicant is here as well.
Commissioner Chesney.
I have a question. With, with this amendment, this still requires a conditional use permit, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff before applicant presentation? Thank you.
For the record, Garrett Gordon, I went to Law Firm of Lewis, Rilke, Roth, Gerber, Christie, today on behalf of Gale Willie Landscaping. First of all, it's after 10 o'clock, so thank you for your service, thank you for your time, I will attempt to be brief. So the story is, Mike Gale Willie of Gale Willie Landscaping approached me, great company, great family man, employs dozens of Washoe County residents, currently located on South Virginia, across from Winco, there's the Gale Willie Gun Shop, next to it's the landscaping, and they do landscaping, wholesale landscaping, all over Washoe County. And we almost attempted to get a number of letters, but thought it might burden the record, but dozens upon dozens upon dozens of retail landscape companies rely upon Gale Willie in order to sell to customers, home builders, homeowners across Washoe County. So they approached me and said, "We have a parcel, a 35-acre parcel, which is gonna be relevant, 35-acre parcel that we would like to move our family business to." And over the years, things have changed. Used to be shrubs, trees, turf. Now it's stones, bark, timber. And so, how can we move on to this 35-acre property? So I met with staff, and I appreciate Trevor and Eric and everyone's time we put our heads together, we first thought, maybe we'll amend the definition of nursery in Washoe County. We pulled up some definitions from Gilbert, Arizona, and Clark County, some desert scape counties of how they've dealt with nurseries, and they did have language related to kind of rock features and kind of ziriscap landscaping. But we came to the conclusion, and with staff, that given this wholesale, wholesale storage use, had the word in it, stone, that it'd be more appropriate to put it in this wholesale storage use. So what did that mean? We looked at this parcel, 35-acre parcel, that's currently zone GR, and said, "Well, what about if we allow this wholesaling, storage, and distribution use in general rural?" The first question that I had is, is this, would this be the most intense use that we're adding in general rural? Are we really going too far? And I believe the answer is no, and I believe staff, because they're recommending approval, believe the answer is no, because already in general rural, with a special use permit, you can do aggregate facility, which includes crushing, we're not doing any crushing on this project. Number two, mining. Number three, petroleum gas extraction. We believe those are a little bit more intense than what we're proposing, and it would be appropriate to put this use in this column with a special use permit. And I think that's very important, the special use permit. If you see also on this table, that last highlighted area, there was added, as Eric mentioned, a now minimum lot size of 40 acres. You can see that minimum lot size, the asterix, doesn't apply to any of those other potential intense uses, aggregate facility, mining, extraction, et cetera. It would just apply to our new use. And I can understand Eric's position and respect where he's coming from, but I think I respectfully disagree that, number one, we submitted the application based on a 35-acre parcel, this kind of cuts the legs out from under us if there's a minimum lot size of 40. But number two, and I think it was mentioned earlier and critical, is this isn't a permitted use by right, it's a special use permit. We'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment, and of course, and that was consistent with these others, we didn't choose to avoid you and go to the Board of Adjustment, this is typical for that whole column. And if the Board of Adjustment denied it or approved it, and the neighbor wanted to appeal it, we go to the Board of County Commission. There is no lot size for the other ones, and I would make the argument, maybe this use with the use permit is appropriate on five acres, maybe it's appropriate on 35, maybe it's appropriate on 15, but we would have to make, and other applicants would have to make, those findings of compatibility with neighbors, and all the other findings that a use permit requires. So we would respectfully request in your motion and in your recommendation to the board, that there would be no 40 minimum lot size, given there's a backstop of a discretionary special use permit that could look at the properties on a case-by-case basis. And again, also keeping in mind that our original application to do this was based on a 35-acre parcel, so it kind of, again, cuts the legs out from under us. But again, thanks Eric for his time, and Trevor, I'm here for any questions, and hopefully that explains where we started and now where we are today. Thank you.
Commissioner Chesney.
So, so you're recommending that we eliminate the minimum lot size on, under heavy on the chart, as well as-
I think he's, I-
To, so-
It would just be, what would actually happen in the, Eric Young, what would actually happen is this-
Right.
-yellow highlighted spot on the chart would be deleted, and there would be no, you wouldn't be requiring any minimum lot size for this use like we don't for the other uses.
So we, okay, so you're recommending that we delete that?
Yes, sir, thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Hare.
Practice now, and I don't know, this is probably for Eric as opposed to the applicant. Do we have, you know, code enforcement is all by, you know, I report my neighbor. Do we have in existence today, non, a number of these non-conforming businesses? You know, I would guess that somebody wants to start selling rock and sand, that, and they're only selling trees now, that they're now selling rock and sand. So I guess my question is, do we have that, is that an issue as well?
Commissioner Hare, to the chair, that's not an ongoing issue that we have, it doesn't exist, no.
It doesn't exist.
Well, it could happen, I mean, we could definitely check records, but I work with the code enforcement officers pretty closely, and this, it might happen from time to time, but I'm not really aware of it as a-
It's not rampant.
No, no, sir, it's not.
Alright, thank you.
And the issue is just the size of the lot, the use would be conforming. Our codes can be a little bit confusing when it comes to non-conformities. There's non-conforming uses, there's non-conforming parcels, and there's a couple other non-conformities. So this is-
That's the first time I've ever heard that it's confusing.
Yeah. Maybe someday you can explain it to us.
Earlier, we asked for clarative language on math, so-
Right. Yeah, there we go. So all staff was doing was recognizing that in just general rule, you can find a lot of different non-conforming parcel sizes, parcels that don't meet the 40 acres. That does proliferate, but there are conforming uses on those parcels. The uses conform, the uses are perfectly allowed and legal, it's just that the lot size is small. And one of the reasons we went with this here is because, in our experience, and I can't tell you that I did a study on this, or that I looked at maps and counted, or did any kind of a real data analysis, this is through my experience, is that a lot of these smaller general rural parcels are located in areas that are already predominantly developed residentially. And so, I don't see it as a huge issue or a huge problem, it was just trying to bring to your attention that we may be getting a lot, you know, applications for this use on- on five acre parcels that are generally in an area developed residentially. And bringing that to your attention so that you can decide whether a minimum lot size or a conforming parcel is important or not. I think that the applicant's position is, is, it's a good position. You've got a special use permit that has to happen, right? They have to come and ask you, "Is it okay to do this here?" And the Board of Adjustment can always say, "You know what? That's a pretty small lot in a residential area, and we're going to say no." So, there is that other mechanism. And, and so, I'm, we felt that it was important to bring that forward, to try and respect what a, what a conforming parcel means, but we've already got seven that don't have a minimum lot size.
His current property is zone general rule, is that correct?
To be honest, Madam Chair, I purposefully tried to know the least amount possible that I could about any individual application that might come forward later. I know that there is one, I know that that's the genesis of this application, but my review and my analysis and my thought behind this had to be relative to the idea that this could happen anywhere in the county on any general rural parcel, somebody could come forward with that application for a special use permit. And so, I purposely tried to avoid knowing much about the potential application behind this.
Okay. The applicant acknowledged that the property is currently zone general rule. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. So, the reason now, to address the point the applicant brought up, you know, listen, I brought this here, we knew it was thirty-five acres and you put forty acres on it, was that so that we would have this discussion? I mean, how did, why did you pick forty if you knew the applicant was thirty-five?
I didn't know the applicant was thirty-five.
Okay, thank you for-
We picked forty because that's the conforming, that's the minimum lot size for a new general rural.
Well, I, I think it's a good discussion to have, I just wondered how we came about that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to point something out here that is a limiting factor. If the sense of the commission is to go below the forty acres potentially, you're not going to be able to do that tonight. You're going to need to, it's going to have to either get continued or just be potentially approved as is or denied as is. The agenda is written to advertise that this potential would apply on lots that are at least forty acres in size. So, theoretically, you can have a property owner out there saying, "Well, I'm not interested in this because all my neighbors are five acre parcels or twenty acre parcels or whatever, so I'm not going to go speak." And then, find out after the fact that the recommendation from the planning commission is for five acre or twenty acre or something like that. So, if that's something that the commission wants to do, then it needs to happen at a future meeting in terms of the forty acre cutoff.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gordon, just one moment. I guess, thank you very much for that clarification, Mr. Edwards. I guess the question that I have is, I mean, this is in addition to allow for heavy use for wholesale, storage, and distribution, and none of the other allowances for special use, which in my opinion are much more, in, I guess I'm not going to pick, they're, 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 the intensity of that development, which is mining, petroleum, aggregate, you know, doesn't have a forty acre requirement, and I do understand that because the agenda item says forty acres, but the others do not have that limitation.
Yeah, I mean, that's a valid point and a valid consideration, but in terms of the open meeting law, you can't take action that contravenes your agenda.
Just either a boo or deny at this point is what you're saying.
Yep, or continue it.
Or continue. Yes, yes.
Hi, for the record, Garrett Gordon, thank you. So, a couple thoughts is, I certainly would not want to continue, it's been a long night, and I'd like to move this forward. So, I have a couple thoughts, one, and I'd certainly defer to legal counsel, one, this isn't final action, and it did say, it does say, you make a recommendation, and so, the first clarification I'd like to know is, if you make a recommendation of approval, but for example, without the forty acre minimum, that would be passed along to the board. So, I don't know if that's one option. If legal counsel is saying, "No, it has to be a recommendation for or against," then I would take a recommendation to uphold staff's recommendation to move forward, but if there was any discussion on the motion that you guys questioned the forty acres to let the board know it came up, that would be great. But, I'd rather have an up or down tonight, Madam Chair and Commissioners, to, I know you put a lot of time in tonight, and I'm happy to move forward with whatever you want to do.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Edwards, in terms of if we move forward on this and we have a motion to approve this development code amendment as stated, but can provide in our comments that none of the other usages, usages that require a special use permit to go before the Board of Adjustment have a minimum acreage?
Yeah, that'll already be in the minutes, and the minutes typically move along to the BCC, and certainly, staff can summarize, you know, the discussion that happened at the planning commission hearing as well. So, that all is information that will be and can be made available to the BCC. And the, the point about this being a recommendation only, that's true, it is a recommendation because as you know, the planning commission doesn't have the final say on whether the county code's amended. But nonetheless, the open meeting law does not allow you to take an action that is-
Beyond what's presented.
Yeah, inconsistent with what you stated in the agenda itself. So, the actions you can take tonight are approve as is, deny as is, you could potentially continue it. I'm hearing from the applicant, that's not what they want, they want up or down, and I think that's a common position from the development side of the world, to want an up or down, because then it moves along in the process, but those are your options tonight from an open meeting law standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question for Nate. The agenda, the, the agenda does mention the forty acres, but the actual draft document, the chart, the chart does not, has the forty acre requirement removed. So, if we approve it, then we're approving that draft document, right?
No. What matters is what the agenda says for the open meeting law.
Oh, the agenda drops everything.
The action you can take is governed by the agenda.
Right.
That's it.
If, if we go up and down, and, and if we go down, does the appeal, if it goes to the BCC, do they have to go up or down as well, or can they amend it? Or are they going to kick it back? I'm asking this to, wait a minute, I'm asking this of counsel.
Yeah.
Are they just going to kick it back then?
So, if it goes up, it goes up to the BCC on an appeal, they can potentially, as long as the agenda is written broadly enough to include the possibility of going below the forty acres, they could potentially do that.
Okay.
But in terms of where we are tonight, that's where we are, there's nothing that we can do at this point to change that tonight.
I guess be, oh.
Just, thank you for the time, unique, always, always funding the land use law world. So, if, well, I'm, just for a point of clarification, hypothetically, this board approved the text amendment as is, that goes up to the Board of County Commissioners. My question would be, if I want the county commissioners to be able to eliminate or reduce that minimum lot requirement, do I have to appeal this decision of approval based on the condition of the approval that I am not in agreement with? Or if its agenda is properly, I can go up to the board and they have full discretion of eliminate, modify, et cetera?
Yeah. The, the board can generally make modifications to recommended approvals from the planning commission, so that's something that they would have the power to do. It would need to be agendized in a way that gave them the potential latitude to do that, but generally, yes, that's what they can do.
Before I ask for a motion, and you have a comment, Commissioner Chesney?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess I have, it is just a comment, wouldn't it be cleaner and simpler to, is it too late to withdraw this thing and then agendize it properly and bring it back in front of the board?
It's under time constraint.
Go through all these appeals and all that? That's not what he wants.
You're not going to be timed, time constrained from the, the code and the NRS, you're going to be fine on that, all right? Because on other situations like an SUP or a tentative map, you've got these provisions that say that if you don't act in a certain time, it gets approved. There's no such thing when it comes to a code amendment, all right? So, there's no such thing as simply cutting the county commission out of the process because the planning commission didn't act in time, all right? And for obvious reasons, because the county commission is the one that has to have that final say. But, the applicant is indicating that they don't want, that they don't want the delay, they want it to unfold, so, you know, I think that's a valid consideration for you as well.
Then, my question or comment is, as these items, I just got to cut to the chase, why was not the acreage disclosed? Or why wasn't it brought up? Eric, why did you not want to know the size of the lot since this was a development code amendment? And in all of this discussion, why was no one ever, I mean, why did we not know what the lot size was?
Madam Chair, because this isn't an amendment relative to any particular parcel, this is an amendment relative to all of Washoe County. And so, if I were to consider this amendment only in regard to how it affects one property, that wouldn't be the comprehensive thought process necessary to amend the code to allow it to happen anywhere. And so, even if I knew, even if I'd called and said, "Hey, do you have a specific property in mind and how big is it?", I wouldn't have really been able to take that into account. I have to think about how this might apply to any given general rural parcel in the county after it's adopted. You know, development code amendments from the public, that is, that are, an application from the public, are often in regard to a specific property, and that's why the application's often needed by, or considered to be needed by the applicant. But, if we started to review those and analyze them subject to just that one parcel, that, that opens a whole nother discussion about what that would mean and how that would work.
But, if I may, if I may, what's, we do have an applicant on a specific parcel.
Well, no, no ma'am, we don't.
Okay.
We have an application for a development code amendment for, to just change the development code. We have no applications whatsoever for a special use permit, you can't even apply for a special use permit for this, you couldn't even submit that right now because it doesn't exist.
Thank you.
I give up.
But, again, what happens with the recommendation of denial? Does it, it still goes to the, to the commission, right?
No, if, if it's denial, then the applicant, if it's denied, then the applicant would need to appeal it, and then it would go to the county commission.
Appeal to this board again.
No, go to the county commission. They could appeal the recommended denial to the county commission.
And then, that would come back here after the appeal?
No, they could potentially act to reverse, oh, I see what you're saying.
Well, I'm wondering if, on what I'm getting at, I apologize, is a way to express your concern, because I can tell that you, you want, you may like to, to access forty acre requirement. So, perhaps a recommendation of denial on this with the statement that we're denying it because we don't like the forty acre minimum. That, that may be the way to give the message to the board about what your, what your intent was.
And I asked that earlier because none of the other allowances require a minimum acreage.
Right. You could vote to deny and state in the record that you're denying because it has the forty acre provision, they can appeal that to the county commission, the county commission then can take action to reverse what you did and move forward on an amendment, all right?
Okay.
They could do that.
All right. I know that's about as clear as mud, but.
Well, we're dealing with an applicant who walks on water.
Okay.
In his advertisements.
The only other, other issue with that is that, is there, is there a cost involved with an appeal?
There is a cost involved, yes, and it's around a thousand dollars.
So, that, that, that approach would be sticking the applicant with another thousand dollars to do the appeal instead of-
But if I, if I hear the applicant correctly, it will be appealed either way.
My, try to clarify, my understanding, with, with an emphasis of trying to avoid Mr. Willie of paying another thousand dollars, given I've been here on his dime for four and a half hours already, is that this body, if you be so inclined to recommend approval of staff's recommendation, if there's commentary about you don't love the forty acres, but you're going with the staff approval, that would be appreciated. If, if that's, if that's the motion that's taken, I don't believe I need to file an appeal because that recommendation would already go up to the Board of County Commissioners, and I could make a plea at this podium for them to remove the forty acres up there. Is that correct, counsel?
Yes, I think that's correct. Now, I can't guarantee you what the county commission's going to do, you know, I don't know if they're going to say, "No, send it back, we don't want it, we, we want it to go back through the process," you know, they may do that, but, but you can, but they certainly could go forward.
Okay.
Well, I am thoroughly confused.
We all are, and some of us are hungry.
Hungry? Are you kidding? I got to go walk a dog.
Yes.
Sorry. Let's make a motion.
Mr. Chesney has been our champion of complicated motions.
Boy, I don't know.
Well, okay, Commissioner John Check will make the motion.
Okay.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission recommend approval of WDC A sixteen dash zero 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 one to amend Washoe County Chapter one-ten Development Code within Article three-oh-two, Table one-one-zero-point-three-zero-two-point-zero-five-point-zero-four Industrial Use Types. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the resolution contained in Attachment A on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission and to direct staff to present a report of this commission's recommendations to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within sixty days of today's date. The recommendation for approval is based on all the following four findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section one-ten dot eight-one-eight dot fifteen E.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Before I can ask for discussion, I have to have that second.
Can we have discussion?
Now, we can have discussion.
Well, let me just say, you, you don't need to now say all the stuff about the forty acres, it's already in the record, it's already all part of everything, and it also can go in the staff report as well, so.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Horan.
Hurry up, we have only have fourteen minutes.
I, I really struggle with the forty acres, why, why we are demanding that this, as opposed to the other seven, have forty acres, I really struggle with that. And, and at this point in time, unless I can be convinced otherwise, I would probably say no.
No to what?
To the motion.
To approve.
To approve. I, you know, I, I just really struggle with that. And I understand why, the forty acres, I, you know, it's, but I, I don't know how, why we do that as opposed to not do it on the others, and why we single this out.
That, that's, I've asked that question about four different ways.
I know, I know, I know, and there's been four different answers, I mean, there's, it's, it's not, it's not black and white.
And there's been four different answers, I mean, there's, it's, it's not, it's not black and white. So, anyway, those are my thoughts.
Before an action is taken, I believe you're, you're going to need to call for public comment.
Oh heavens, yes. I'm sorry, is there any public comment on this item? No public comment.
That's the first for me for the record.
Yes, yes. Okay, any other discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
I thought we had to have, what was the other one we had to have?
That was a master plan, this is simple majority. So, and for the record then, Madam Chair, it's three in favor, one opposed, and the one opposed is Commissioner Haran.
Commissioner Haran.
Thank you.
I do agree with Commissioner Haran, but moving this forward. Thank you. Now they're all going to just leave us. Okay, we're now to item 10, Chair and Commission items. A, future agenda items? Any requests?
Shorter meetings.
Shorter meetings, yes.
Eliminate public comment, please.
We can't do that. I guess, and I, you know, in terms of if we could get, we had a water update, but, and I know this has come before other commissions, but an update on the flood situations in Washoe County as it affects lands.
Okay, we'll schedule that.
Request for information from staff?
I, I just want to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Chesney.
Go ahead.
I had, this evening, is there any way that we can get, get a legible area map of, of streets?
Yeah.
I mean, they razzed down on me with so many street names tonight that I, I couldn't figure out which way it was up. And none of, and I know it's a lot of work, but I mean, even if you just could photocopy a, a street map or something of, of the area, because they, they're talking about all these different streets that didn't show up on any, any of the maps in...
Or ledger, or a ledger with color codes about what, where that street is on the map, because you can't read it.
Yeah.
Well, I had to use a magnifying glass to go through.
So maybe just a color coded with a ledger, it would, I mean, I'd like a bigger picture.
Yeah.
Because I know it's photocopies and copies of copies of copies, and it becomes illegible. And I, and, and if I may, Commissioner Chesney, the link that was provided to download the staff reports, my report came out like this, with those maps being ginormous. And then some of the attachments or exhibits were not in mine, so that's why before...
They wouldn't come through because they didn't form to the size, change size.
Commissioner Barnes left, he left me his. So I know that these are saved in PDF, but there is a problem as they're exported.
Okay, do apologize, I wasn't aware that, that that went through like that, and we will correct that, yeah.
Just one on the record, that I have a concern that, of course, it's a lot of information, it's a very large document, but like I said, when I went to Planning and Development and looked it up, the Planning and Development application was 333 pages. It included 333 pages, and it included a full traffic study, had the geologic study, it had a lot more detail than what we're looking at here. And sometimes by us not having the full facts, that some of the public may go out and find, they're coming in with stuff, and I don't want to feel blindsided that I don't have, I'm not saying I want you to kill the trees, but I'm not feeling that I don't want to be blindsided by information that I'm not aware of, per se, that it was an issue.
That's fair, but I, maybe I, I need to survey each of the planning commissioners, and I don't know if each of you want a packet that's going to be that thick. And so if...
I think if you provided with us a link to where the, the full application is available for our review, and, and direct us to that, if we want to take that on.
That, that was what I was going to get to, okay, thank you.
I'm just saying that it was, it was, the only reason I became aware is that one of the residents that got one of those notice cards said, I went, this is what it is, and I went, and I looked. And then, and then I got, and I go, oh my gosh, the, what I'm going to get in the mail is going to kill me. And then I got the small one, and that's why I sent you the question inquiring the difference. And you offered to make one for me, and I go, no, I already read it, but it was just the difference in the volume of data for us to have all the facts, to be able to, you know, to respond.
We'll include the link in, in all of the future staff reports.
Thank you. Any other requests for information from staff?
Maybe just as you, I'm not sure if I'm in the right category here, but I just want to find out where the status is regarding the decision tree or the steps that are taken, that you've spoken in the past, how far along that is in process? Because again, I think that will help with some of the questions and issues that we're dealing with, if they realize where the steps are, to give them better understanding of the process.
Maybe for clarification.
It's a document that was being created by, and I believe you're working on it, right?
Oh, I didn't know, I couldn't remember who was working on it.
And it's just to allow the public to know what the, what the steps are in the process.
Flow.
The flow, a flow chart about what it means, a tentative map, and, you know, so the public understands that this is by no means final, just the steps.
Because some of the public still comes in and says, this is it, this is our only chance to say anything. If we don't get it here, so that, that, I just wanted to follow up, because you'd mentioned that previously.
And was that request to have a handout at the, at the front as people come in?
Yeah, well, and it was to be, you can check with Mr. Webb, but it was to be included. So the CAB members received it, you know, before, and then it has also included the packet of this. So just a status update on that flow chart.
Okay, thank you.
Directors and legal counsel items, report of previous planning commission items?
I have nothing to report.
Item B, legal information and updates?
Nothing else.
Oh, thank you. General public comment? Do we have any public comment?
We had one, I believe the gentleman has left the building, that was Danny Cleos.
No one here by that name. Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Motion for adjournment?
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, 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 no. We are adjourned, thank you Commissioners. And thank you staff.